Hardy butt.
I need to buy some of those delicious crunchy. Because I feel bad, I always eat.
We find them at the Warner Market Basket. They carry the brand on their market baskets.
But Warner ones don't have the kitchen barbecue.
Well, that's good. So I didn't want to like bother anyone on their day off. But I went to the Warner Market Best the other day and I saw Dan Blanchett and I saw Mr. Rizicky. Um, you know, like the head of meetings for the school system. I was like, wow, this place right now, we like, how can they would really lose a lot of top brass?
Any chance that you remember to bring?
Oh, you're two wanted buyers. There you go. I had to block out the name and the affidavit that was used to be, used to be on there.
Well, thank you.
How's he going? We live.
You on YouTube?
Yeah.
Oh, it's weird. It's like. Hello. Like the phones are on. I can speak very mildly and be well heard. Hello.
There he is.
Yeah.
The man, the myth, legend.
Hi.
Jeff, you'll be glad to know you're projected in a six foot way out up on the, up on the wall here.
Not doing me any good.
All right, so I will call this meeting to order tonight. What is today? Monday, November third. Today is um, a budget work session, session agenda. Um, so we have a four board, well, four of us in person. I'm Sprinter Dunlap, we have Stephen Whitley and Vicky Ram and Alyssa Khan and Jeff Donahoe is joining us remotely. And so I will move that we allow Jeff to join us remotely.
I'll second.
And it's a roll call vote.
Vicky, yes.
Yes.
I mean, yes.
Yes.
All right, Jeff, you're with us officially.
Yeah, I'll be here until seven.
Okay. We have um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven non-publics to vote on, so we're gonna have to do roll call votes on all of these, but first up is approval of the consent agenda.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda of November third, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All right, it's a roll call vote, so all those in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
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 All right. Thank you. Next is approval of the public meeting minutes from October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five.
I will move we approve the October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five minutes.
Second.
Okay, Jeff, you weren't with us, I don't think, right?
Abstained.
All right, so you just won't vote on all of these, I suppose. But I guess we still.
It'll be fun to ask him to abstain eight times.
He's abstaining, all right, Vicky?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
I mean, yes.
Yes.
Okay, now, first of our non-public meeting minutes from October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, session one, and these were sealed.
I will move that we approve the session one, non-publics.
I will second Jeff.
Same.
Vicky?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
I mean, yes, and Alyssa?
Yes.
And these are not sealed. Oh, wait, sorry. Those are her seal. Okay, those are good. Next up, approval of the non-public meeting minutes from October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, session two, these are not sealed.
Uh, move that we approve session two, non-public meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Jeff?
Abstained.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and Alyssa?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next up is approval of the non-public meeting minutes of October twenty seven, twenty twenty five, session three, these are not sealed.
I'll move we approve the session three, non-public meeting minutes.
I'll second. Okay, Jeff?
Abstained.
Um, Vicky, it looks like you're still looking at something, so.
No, no, it's fine. I'm here for it. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I mean, yes.
Yes.
All right. Next is approval of the non-public meeting minutes from October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, session four, these are not sealed.
I'll move we approve the session four, non-public meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Jeff?
Stained.
Vicky?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
I mean, yes, Alyssa?
Yes.
Three more to go. Okay, approval of the non-public meeting minutes, October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, session five, these are not sealed.
Move we approve the session five, non-public meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Jeff?
Abstained.
Vicky?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
I mean, yes, and Alyssa?
Yes.
Okay, approval of the non-public meeting minutes from October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, session six, these are not sealed.
Move we approve the session six minutes, non-public meetings.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Jeff?
Stained.
Vicky?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
I mean, yes, and Alyssa?
Yes.
Last one, approval of the non-public meeting minutes of October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, session seven, these are not.
Move we approve the session seven, pub, non-public meetings.
Second.
All right, Jeff?
Abstained.
Vicky?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
I mean, yes, and Alyssa?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Next is uh, the beginning of our budget presentation zone. So first we have a budget overview. We do? Well, that's what it says on there. Well.
Um, so yes, budget overview. Last year you had a budget book and you had some fancy revenue stuff and you had all kinds of really helpful information. We don't have that ready to go to you yet. We're still waiting for Department of Revenue to approve our revenues for twenty twenty five. Um, so we're gonna build that as we go through it. Um, and I think what, what I'd like to do is kind of do it in reverse and build the presentation for your budget to the budget committee. Um, you gave us a, a goal of staying at or below three percent, and I think we're pretty close to that. There are a couple of outstanding um areas that we have not yet set numbers for, one of which is the contract with waste management at Ash at the transfer station. Um, we're working on that. That looks like it has gone up significantly, so when um, Dan is here next week, we're going to pick your brains as to whether or not we want to uh, go with waste management or spend some time and go out to bed. No telling what we get.
Right.
Um, one of the other areas um, that is not, well, the cemetery is in there now, correct? No, cemetery is not in there yet. Um, they met this afternoon, so um, that will be in next week's. Um, you'll get a whole new packet next week. Seems to me there was another one that was missing. Those, those are the big ones. Um, so we'll have, have more complete info next week.
So you are planning on putting this together?
Okay. For the budget committee in, and they're not their meeting next week. Because you won't be through the
December.
But December, yeah. We'll pull it to the CIP is also just kicking off, so we don't have. Um, and I don't, I don't want to give you last year's info because that's to me not helpful. Since we're talking about this year.
Hmm. Sorry, muffin. One practical question. We have a regular meeting next Monday.
Yes.
That's the tenth, another budget meeting on the seventeenth.
Yes.
And then a regular meeting on the twenty fourth. And then another budget meeting on December first, or TBD?
TBD, I would say.
Okay.
Um.
Okay.
I was going through, you know, the minutes and my notes from last week's meeting, and we pushed a lot of, we, we, for example, wanted to set aside forty minutes to talk about boards and committees. Do we still want to do that with the budget, or do we want to kind of evaluate, see how it goes tonight, uh, you know?
Having never done this before, I can see all of our awesome department heads here. Are we gonna have another slate of department heads next week or in two weeks?
Next week is what they're scheduled. Next week we have cemeteries, public safety, which is police, fire and ambulance, public works, transfer station, highway buildings and ground, solid waste and sewer, uh, capital expenditures, which I'm sure the CIP is not going to be ready. They're hoping to be done by the end of the month. And then revenues, which I would base off of this year's revenues, assuming the DRA finalizes them. So I, I see this kind of going a little bit into your November seventeenth and maybe twenty-fourth work session and finalize the budget, you know, where we may not have everything until maybe the seventeenth, um, and CIP even later than that, so.
Hmm. I think we'll just have to see what else is on our agenda for next week and um,
Take a change?
Yeah. Because I don't want to keep pushing stuff off, but I also know that there's limits to us being here for like five, six hours talking about budget and other stuff, so.
I love a five hour bunch of.
I try to kind of balance some sort, sort of a dynamic process. Um, okay. Thank you for that clarification on the schedule. And are we? Are you gonna reach out to Dana and Webster to talk about meeting with them?
I did. I reached out to him this morning and they, they are meeting tonight, so he's going to run it by his board and invite me tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
I did invite them to next week's meeting.
Okay. Should we jump into planning and zoning?
I was just waiting to see if somebody said no.
Thank you.
Um, hi. Hi, um, thank you for the opportunity to present the planning and building department's budget. Um, this year, um, my focus was to maintain the essential services that we now provide to residents, um, planning board, zoning board and and allow us to do some of the ongoing initiatives such as zoning amendments and master plan implementation. Um, I'm gonna summarize uh, the key areas, um, I guess I would say I'm going to the operating part of the budget minus the um employment, employee part of it, as normally do. There's a few modest adjustments to align with next year's um priorities, but a couple, uh, one thing I want to start out by saying, just for the record, that last, this year's budget, two thousand twenty-five, you'll see uh, was one hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars. Uh, the proposed budget is now for twenty twenty-six is one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars. A difference of one thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars or a little over one percent, so. Um, so do you have a certain pros, procedure you'd like me to follow, or I usually would go through just, okay?
Yeah.
All right, as long as you feel comfortable.
I think the past, we sort of defer to what you all want to do.
Okay.
Big ticket item or any like notable changes or
Sure.
challenges.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you guys.
Um, so I'll start with, um, I'm gonna give you the account number. It's the three, four, one, zero, zero, four, one, nine, one, three, four, one. That's the telephone. Um, that one, it, uh, it's been the same for quite a while, but it, we, I, we've seemed to be meeting budget, you know, not exceed the budget requirement, so that uh, pretty much, I think I've increased that by three dollars or something like that.
Twelve.
Oh.
Four, one, nine, one.
Okay, sorry, gotcha.
And I'm down at line three, forty-one.
Okay.
Okay. Um, computer software, which is li, uh, three, forty-five, um, is the same as always, but with a four percent increase, um for this coming year. Uh, the web supports services, it, um, are what we use for our ArcGIS online. Um, the query manager contract, that's the same. Um, and avatar software contract, that is what we use for issuing building permits and keeping track of um, planning board approvals, zoning board of adjustment approvals, along with again, building permits. That what's interesting about that software program, it also is the same company that we use for assessing. So it's real, when we issue a permit, it asks you, do you want to link it? And we do, the assessing company that you contract with um, can run a list and they're already marked for pickups, so there's nothing we have to do. Uh, line item three, forty-six, the registry of deeds, um, that again is as indicated recordings and copies. Um, that's seventy-five dollars. At this point, we, as you can see, we've spent fifty-four. It's been seventy-five dollars for a number of years. Uh, line item three, ninety, professional services. Um, this one is gonna look a little, um, if you're looking at it now, and you're probably wondering the year-to-date expenditure is so low. Um, the CIA planning map maintenance contract um, was a four percent increase. I think that's built quarterly. Um, the master plan conservation preservation and open space chapter, that had not been done. And that is um, will be done with most of the work um, with regional planning in the Conservation Commission. Uh, the estimate was thirty-seven hundred. I'm leaving it at thirty-seven hundred. But what is nice about this is the Conservation Commission is going to, I think, substantially help with this, but I haven't had an official vote with them, so I, I want to budget. This past year, the reason why we never did it, if you've ever have an opportunity to go on the planning um in building departments page, you'll see the um, master plan chapters completed, the community facilities and recreation was completed and utilities was completed. Um, the um planning board input, the, excuse me, the master plan implementation chapter, that's where you provide based on community input, you develop the master plan. And you have to provide goals in the vision that you would like to see. Those visions are then put into um the implementation chapter. And the update, what the planning board did is gone through each of the chapters, housing, um, economics, transportation, and they prioritized everything um, based on what they thought was um, easily achievable. Um, things that have been discussed for maybe five years and nothing's gone forward, may have made it down at the bottom of, you know, it was a high, low and medium criteria. Also in that chapter, they've indicated um, the responsible parties and whom they suggested would be um, the party that could uh, be potential partners. So each of the items um, they've gone through and done that. If you get a chance, um, it's in the implementation chapter of the master plan. So doing that, we, it took longer than what we anticipated, so the master plan uh, conservation preservation, open space, um, will be the next chapter. And um, then the planning consultant services is typical that we um, have in the past years. Um, twenty-four hundreds in there, as you can see, it was not used this year. It wasn't probably used last year. Um, this is actually for um, specialized professional assistance on a need basis. This is not application reviews, um, which the applicant would pay for, um, for specialized review. This is more a mapping and data, um, maybe build out information or analysis that may be needed as it relates to a zoning amendment in a neighborhood, um, something that could easily be achieved by a professional versus in-house. So again, um, asking the same amount of money with that, um, if not spent, it would of course be returned. Um, line five, thirty, uh, planning board travel and meals. Um, this is again, each year the same estimate. It's a high estimate, but it is based of, of course, on the IRS rate for travel. Um, and that's how the number came out. Um, it's eighty-eight miles, you know, week and so on and so forth. You can see that. Um, five, forty, professional, excuse me, uh, conferences and training, um, legislature, um strongly recommends that plannings and, and zoning boards of adjustment annually, um, uh go to conferences or training, whether it be in a webinar or, or anything that's put out there to try to help them keep up on con, changes in um, the laws, um, or even refresher courses. In this particular case, um, we have spent some money, as you see. This isn't reflective of, I just spent um, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars for the next two days. I'm going to the New England Planning Conference in Portland.
Oh, fun.
Yeah. Well, I'm driving, so it's not like I'm staying, so I don't know about this. Um, so that is, will be included in the cost, but um, we are not increasing that line item. Um, planning board printing, this was a, I would say more or less a one time, it's down three, it will be down three hundred and fifty dollars. The fees were a whole set of new code books, books, um. And we're using the two thousand twenty-one international codes, whether residential building and so on and so forth. Um, what ended up happening just quickly is code books were available, the public would come in and say, can I borrow it? Can I look at it? And we never get them back. So this time, I hate to say they're kind of under lock and key, you can sit here and look at them. Uh, because it's, it, they are set up so that a homeowner or a builder cannot go online and look at the codes necessarily. They have to pay a fee. So in this case, I'm just, every time there's an update, we'll buy the update. But, and then we already have the original and you can see the two differences, so, um. Yes, okay, and the planning and Lexus Nexus, planning and land use regulations handbooks, those are ones that usually, one book is provided to each board member. It's about a hundred and some odd dollars a year for, we'll say thirteen books. Um, it has all the updates in most of the statutes that relate to planning or zoning for them. The um, advertising is um, remaining the same. Again, that is fully reimbursed by application fees. Uh, dues and subscriptions was moved to another line item, as you can indicate, it's no longer on the planning budget. And postage, again, for the most part, is reimbursed by applications or applicants. Uh, postage has gone up quite a bit, and you can see that um, the um, estimated was two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five for this year. Um, and it last year was one thousand, eight hundred and fifty.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Of course.
Shift to zoning.
Yeah.
Um, so for, just from that postage one, how do you guys, what do you use to estimate what the?
Sure. So we actually, when we go to use postage, this, there's different buttons you push. One is planning, so we can run it and you can see where, what we've paid for postage. So for example, in, since September or October, uh, we've spent, we spent one thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. Um, we turned around and did that, broke it out per month. It's quite high. Um, I was shocked that it would be that high. But it's all based on what you get for the size of a parcel and the number of robotters. And the other thing that I'm working on, it's coming slowly, is that um, planning board would use if they can, the um, notebooks or what, you know? Uh, most of the time, the planning board will bring their own computers, laptops. Um, but when it comes to plan, reviewing of plans, they like to have the hard copies of the plans rather than re, looking at it on the screen and having to look at the papers, going back and forth on the screen. So I'm trying to reduce that cost.
The, the extra four, twenty-five though, is that because of the same amount of mailing, but the postage is gonna go up, or are we anticipating more mailings?
No, I'm not anticipating more mail. It was averaged out over so many months, so it was, right now I've spent two hundred and something a month, I think it was, or three hundred and something a month. I'd have to look at, sorry, I don't have the exact answer.
Okay, you annualized it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tried to.
Got it.
And then we assumed, I assumed that postage would go up.
Got it.
And I think it was like four cents or something like that.
Um, the other one I just wanted to ask you about Karen was the extra overtime.
Yes.
Uh, can you, I mean, it looks like this number has been kind of all over the place, is
Yeah.
three thousand? Is that gonna be enough?
Um, I, I didn't touch overtime in here at all. Um, so I think
You haven't, you haven't done, um, I don't know wage stuff yet.
Oh, okay, would that be covered in the wage stuff later?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um.
Never mind.
That Karen and I are working on, we've had some conversations um, about options or ways to try to handle that. Um, it also is a number of occasions we've been short staffed, so I've helped out with respect to that, so I meant staying later. Um, and just to give you an idea, um, this week, um, I'm here tonight for a little bit. Tomorrow would be ZBA meeting, Wednesday is Economic Development Committee meeting, and Thursday night, I'm at the Housing Committee meeting. So just to give you an idea, um, but Karen and I have talked about it and we're working on some sort of solution to it.
Great.
For the future.
Thank you.
I would recommend too, I know this is kind of off topic, um, if you get a chance, um, look at the planning building its website and there's a page on there for proposed amendments, zoning amendments for twenty twenty-six. So we try to keep that as updated as possible. We just had our last work session on Tuesday of the twenty-eighth. And um, we're having our second public hearing on the eighteenth. And then the final public hearing at which no changes can be made will be, I think, December thirteenth. So that will be the night in which the planning board will make recommendations as to what gets put on the ballot or not for zoning. So if you want to read a little. It's there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Um, okay, so next up we have Christine Town Clerk Tax Squad slash Elections.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, we will start with the town clerk section, I guess. There's not.
Oh, it's on there. I see, yes.
So starting the, the computer contract, I did the same, we increased it four percent. The computer um, software company hasn't given us an exact um, increase yet, but I think across the board, we all kind of did the four percent. Um, I'll probably just touch on things that have changed. Everything seemed to stay right around the same. Um, professional services, that's to um, have our our archive books. What's the word I'm looking for?
Permanent records.
Permanent records, but to make the, to make the books so they're um, where they're just the old paper right now, they protect them and they keep it so they last longer. Um, that you can see we haven't done in a few years. I'm hoping to put that back in the budget. And ideally, um, get some some of our records electronically saved rather than just in hard copy. Um, it looks like a lot of our birth records have been saved or preserved, that was the word I was looking for earlier. Um.
How many, this twenty-five hundred bucks, how many, will that cover everything?
It's only gonna cover one book.
And how many books do you think we'll need total to do it all?
Well, it's, it's definitely gonna be over a course of many, many years. Um, I don't know. I guess I would have to look deeper into that. A lot of it depends on the size of the book, how bad of shape it's in. Um, that's what I'm asking for here is half of what was in the budget before that we just didn't have a chance to get done. Um, and that's why I figured it would be one to two books depending on the shape of the book. And I didn't know if we were thinking that going back and preserving the books that have already been preserved electronically is something the town would want to do. And having it accessible to anyone that wants to look up a record and not have to get access to the vault where um, there's only a couple of us that can actually get into the vault and it's not easy to do, so having it accessible electronically might be something we'd want to look into um, in the future. Um, conferences and trainings, attend the yearly training. Um, we went to it this year and, and just did not find that it was it's not required, and we honestly just didn't find that it was worth our money and closing our office for a week. Um, so the money that I'm asking for there is just so we can attend the two conferences a year just to keep us up to date on any changes in laws um, for tax collectors as well as um the town clerk side. The office supplies stayed about the same. The postage went up. Um, that was mostly based on how much postage went up just this year alone. The lien notices, the civ, civil forfeitures, um stuff like that, we get the money back for that. Um, that's part of the fee when we have to send those notices out, so.
That's part of the fee when we have to send those notices out, so I'm budgeting for it, but some of that will come back. Dog tags, this year we did permanent dog tags. So we don't need to order as many this year. We did sixteen hundred dog tags were ordered last year. I'm only gonna order about five hundred this year and that's just to replace any or any for any new dogs. The furniture, you'll see a jump in that, but that's because. We need a new shredder. We have one that's fairly old and with having to shred ballots and checks and. Other personal information, I was hoping to get a better shredder that would withhold shredding ballots. And the DMV printers, they're, it's not specific to DMV, but they are special printers to be able to print the registrations. We had three of them, had to replace one already, and I believe they were purchased around the same time, so I'm anticipating the other two. Failing on us soon as well, so I wanted to have it in the budget to be able to get those. Cause we wouldn't be able to do much without them.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
Have we thought about like lease financing the new printers? Is there?
I have not thought about that, but we can definitely look into that.
I mean, for that, if these are what, five hundred, six hundred new each one?
That is roughly, but yeah, what I.
For that cost, maybe we, it's not worth it, but for any bigger ticket equipment stuff, that might be a more.
Looking into.
The the taxi.
Can definitely look into that. With the one that we that failed this year, we replaced it with just a regular printer. Definitely more cost effective to replace it than to repair it, so. But I will look into the lease financing, absolutely. Where did we go from there? So now we get to talk about elections, which is where you're gonna see a big jump, cause there are three elections next year instead of the one we had this year. So you'll see election wages has gone up just to be able to cover that, the supervisions of the checklist hours. The state has said that they have to have a minimum of four. Meetings, no matter how many elections there are in a year, they need to meet at least four times in a year just to update. Election net and our voter registrations. The expense line is where you're really gonna see a big difference and that is due to. A couple of things. There are new affidavit envelopes that the town is gonna be responsible to purchase their own for the town meeting. But those affidavit envelopes will be supplied by the state in time for the second two elections. It's just the town one, they're not gonna have them supplied to us. We have to pay for those. Printing our ballots, this time I budgeted for two ballots double sided. I kind of got caught last year. Where I didn't budget to have two ballots and we ended up with two ballots, so I went over my budget last year. Because I wasn't prepared, so this year I'm trying to think ahead. We might not need those two ballots, but I wanted to have it in the budget just in case. We do have a new tabulator. It was delivered a few months ago, image cast. With that, there's just a few one-time fees that we have to pay. Such as the supplies, we need new pens, the tape rolls, new seals. The tabulator itself was paid for last year, so that isn't part of this, but.
Tabulator mean where we feed the ballots?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. And then there's the programming of the tabulator and the pole pads. That's just a one-time annual fee. And the. One-for-all machine, that's another item that the state has said that we have to have that one-for-all. Accessible voting machine available for town elections as well as state and federal elections. And that also falls on the town to do the coding. Of that machine, the one good thing is the state has decided to allow us to continue to borrow their tablets. So the town doesn't have to buy a tablet, we can continue to borrow the state's tablets, so that's a good thing, but we do still have to pay to code it. That is split with the school, so we pay half, the school pays half because their election is also on. Part of our election, so they would need to have their stuff coded for that as well.
Will the new tabulator be at the new, I mean, at the next election, March?
It will be used in March, yes.
Yep.
It is very exciting.
Have you done some tests for?
I've done tests. Sarah and Anna came when they were doing the tests and. It's actually, it's gonna be really good, we're gonna.
Does it accept a full day to have some tea ballots?
It does. And it actually prints out right on the slip that we print out at the end of the night. It will have a picture of every write-in vote.
Oh, wow, okay.
Printed right on the, right on the slip, so that's kind of fun, too.
Yeah, okay, it's exciting.
Think that is everything on my end. So do we anticipate postage going up again, or? Unfortunately, the way that it's been kind of trending is it's going up at least once a year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Over three times.
Yeah. Yeah, it's it's kind of hard to say, but I guess we should anticipate that it'll at least pull up some.
Yeah.
Trying to.
I have sense last time, right?
And that's. We we do have a lot of people who have switched to do the paperless, which is fantastic. We do have some that go paperless and then wanna go back to having paper though, so it's kind of hard to judge. Our software company for paperless vehicle registrations actually charges us less than. A stamp, less than sending out postage for the paperless. So if you sign up for paperless, there's a little bit of a fee that we accrue, but it's less than postage, so. It ends up working out.
Just looking at the trend year over year, so we would anticipate to see a big drop in the twenty-seven budget. Right? And then another large jump in twenty-eight budget?
For election?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then the supplies, looking at some of the the fees called out under election expenses. You were saying that some of these are one-time fees and some of these are reoccurring, is that correct?
Yeah, so like the the fourteen hundred that I have for supplies, the new pens. Once we get those new pens, those will last for a few years. The tape rolls, depending on how many votes there are, how big the election is, the tape rolls could last for a few elections as well. Same thing with the seals. Cause you only need two or three an election, cause every time you break one, you have to put a new one on. So those were things that I was just thinking would be, this one time I have to supply, I have to get stocked. And then I wouldn't be having to replace it every year. It would just be replacing it as needed.
And then the the coding is a reoccurring fee, correct?
That's every election, yeah. So we need, we are relying on like a third party to do the coding? Yep, so the company L H S is who we work with and they're out of Salem and they're phenomenal.
Okay, great.
They are there for every step of everything that we do and they do our pole pads as well as the tabulator. So they're, they are a third party, but they're fantastic.
Excellent.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Christine. Hi, next is Kelly, Finance. It's an admin insurance service. Hi.
Such exciting stuff.
All right, this is page eight. So the first line on that page, line one twenty, I did put funds in there again. For a finance clerk. It was a position that was held until like October of twenty nineteen. So I'm assuming at some point during COVID, that stopped and was not rehired. But I'm hoping to get some additional help, cause I could really use. So that's, that's on. And then my computer service line, which is three forty-five, that one went up. MTS had a four point five percent increase this year, which is pretty typical.
Is MTS the accounting software?
Yeah. And also the payroll software as well. For conferences and trainings, I did not spend any out of that this year. Cause I didn't attend the yearly conference, cause. Because of Neil leaving, it was like his.
Other sorry.
So I did that in, do plan on going next year. Deuces and subscriptions went up very slightly for my New Hampshire GFOA membership. The audit expense. Went up fifty dollars, which was very good, I thought, and will be locked in for a three-year. Nice rate for that, I'll just. So on number six ten oh two, which is the fixed asset and OPEB valuation line. I did put back in that OPEB valuation. We are required to complete that.
What's OPEB?
So it's the pension, so it's the liabilities that are related to specifically. And Gatsby, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, they have Gatsby notice seventy-five, which says you need to do this. And we have.
It's like auditing our pension obligations?
Yeah, so it's. So we have during that liability of the pension piece, so it's not currently captured in our audit and they note that each year. So we do really need to do that.
We, we, we took it out last year?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I did put that back in this year, which is the increase. And and then I did increase the postage and copier contracts. It's not due to actual postage. This one is due to our copier contract, which we have two more years in this contract. And then I'm hoping to get something that will be a little more steady and not go up as much as this one has been going up. So that is all for the finance part of the budget. Any questions on those?
I missed what you said about the copier, I'm sorry.
The copier contract, we got locked into a five-year contract and it increases each year.
Okay, got it.
It has an escalator.
Yeah.
Are the, is the copier contract inclusive of copiers outside of this building?
It's just that one over there.
Okay.
Yeah, and it also fluctuates like with how many color toppings we do and shirts like that. All right, so I'm gonna skip to the Personnel Administration, which is page ten. Do we actually have really good news with our health insurance this year, which was great?
What's that, Kelly?
Our rates were very minimal increases, so that was good. There is an increase in that line, but a lot of that is due to plan changes more than. Actual insurance changing. So between our two health insurance plans we offer, one had a. Decrease, right?
Yeah, one had a slight decrease.
Yeah, a point three percent decrease on one and two point nine percent on the other one.
Wow.
Yeah, so I have not seen that.
Is that because we're being like good stewards and doing preventative medicine and stuff like that, you know?
We're in a big pool. The school.
The Health Trust.
Yes, and I think, I don't know if it's just us in the school or if that pool is even larger than that, but. With the whole pool, there's been less use of the insurance or better use. Also promoting like the other plan that we started to offer, that was a cost savings to the employees and to the town. That plan actually helps because people are shopping around. They don't have to be deductible if they go to certain locations and. I think people are kind of. Making better, yeah, doing their smart shoppers and.
Yeah, cool.
Overall, it's coming down a little. The health insurance deductible line, that is that deductible matching for the people who do go to that law, the lower cost plan. That got cut a little bit last year too, so I just kind of bumped it up to where. We probably should be budgeting for it until we have more years to kind of see what those trends are.
Do you think for that one, the year-to-date, is that gonna move at all, or is that gonna stay where it's at right now, do you think?
No, it will move. They bill us quarterly for that.
Okay.
And we'll get another.
Okay, so we'll be, looks like pretty close to the twenty twenty-five budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Dental insurance did have a little bit of an increase. And we also had some plan changes, so that's why I want to increase it a little bit, too.
Is that Delta Dental?
Yes. There was a couple little changes with like long-term disability and life insurance, but a lot of that is just. Adjusted based on who we have for employees at the time and rates of pay and things like that.
Are all of our employees, do they all have access to this long-term disability insurance?
Full-time.
Okay.
And then the unemployment insurance had a little bit of an increase in as well as the workers' comp insurance. And then we look down to line two ninety-one for the FSA miscellaneous expense line. That one came down just a little bit, because they did reduce some of our fees that we get. If people chose that lower-cost health plan. They waived their FSCA fee. That's it for Personnel Administration. Guys, have any questions on that? Then we're gonna go to page forty-five. Are that service? So forty-seven eleven nine eighty-three oh one is the open space bond. And that had its last, it's having its last payment in this year, so that will be zero for next year. The other, the road bond and the Houston Barn, there was just a little bit of a shift between principal and interest. On those, adjusted according to our amortization schedules.
Because we parse out principal and interest, so these are the principal.
Yep, so the forty-seven eleven are all the principal payments. And then the forty-seven twenty-one will show you the interest payments. So there'll be a matching one for each, so like. Open space, yeah.
I see. I see. So I guess if I'm reading this correctly, like we budgeted six hundred and sixty-five dollars for the interest on the open space bond this year. And so we're backing that out of your budget because, or out of this budget, because that is ending in twenty twenty-five.
Yes. Any questions on that?
Did you want to talk about popularity? Oh, I could do this. The prime, they're just numbers they give us.
Do you wanna, what page is that? Do you wanna, uh, what page is that?
Were you taking a scare?
Four, never remember that one. Oh, uh, forty-one ninety-six. Way back there.
The page eighteen?
Wait, I'm sorry, can I just? Interest and principal, so. Every year, these budgets are gonna shift. With a little bit less going interest and a little bit more going to principal because of the amortization schedules.
Yes, depending on how the amortization schedule is, but yeah, most of them will work like that, and we have it. The schedule for the life of the loan.
Thank you.
Yeah, and in town report, there's a more detailed on like which year, how much principal and how much interest. So page eighteen for the insurances. Um, the property and liability had a pretty good increase this year, it increased thirty-six thousand. There is a, I am gonna be looking into trying, um, as the joint loss management committee is trying to get, um. Be part of Primax's program to help bring that cost down a little bit. Um, it's just getting the time to get all of those pieces together.
Do you know? Sorry, go ahead.
That's okay.
Do you know that, did everyone get an increase like this from Primax, or do we get special treatment for some not good reason?
I don't know that for a fact, but we haven't had any really large claims, we've had claims, but nothing.
Yeah.
That I think would drive it though, uh, like that.
Okay.
Um, and Primax is also a pool.
Yeah.
Oh, it depends on what other towns have going on as well too.
Yeah.
So, but um, part of the program that they have, like if you have an up-to-date. Safety manual, if your joint loss management committee is active, which we are a meeting. You can um, provide them different documents and they'll um, give you a discount towards your property and liability.
Hmm.
That we're working on that.
Good job.
Yeah.
What's the timeline for that type of project?
Finding the time has been really hard lately, so not sure, I would like to start that, um. Probably like in March when things kind of slow down in my office. To kind of push that a little.
How, how big of a discount do you get?
I don't know, I don't remember exactly what the percent was. I think it was like three to five percent or something, but it's pretty big, yeah. It's a pretty big bill, so.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Would be worth it.
Mm-hmm. Also to just look good in Primax's eyes, you know?
Right, nice to be proactive on all.
Good job.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Next up is Paula.
Hi.
There.
Okay. Um, so the first one to start with, um, Kimball Pond wages. So every year I predict how many staff will have. Um, every year I overbudget and it, you know, looks like the trend is, um, coming in low. So I did end up running the pond this year, um. With fewer staff, we shrunk the swimming area, um, so they could manage it, um. And I'm going to go forward next year managing at the same way. So that is my intention and that's kind of based on. I mean, it's, it's kind of a prediction based on the staff I think are coming back or how many I anticipate. Um, coming back, so. Um, so the budget will be lower than I have in the past several years. But as you can see, you know, I've been coming in somewhere around twenty.
Mm-hmm.
So I. It, you know, if, if I do end up, that means if I do end up getting more applicants and I'm like, oh. I really could use that fourth one, we could go back to the way it was, I'm not going to have any wiggle room and I'm gonna have to say no. So I'm really, I realize I'm locking myself in. To operating smaller, less, less staff.
Was that more of like a pain for you to deal with, or was it, did it work out okay?
Um, so where I saw that, you know, it, it was a challenge was, um, you know. People do like to go in long distance swim, so that takes that ability away. Um, the camp, for instance, loved it because they loved that they didn't have to travel so far out. To get to the dock, it was, it was really, it was sweet and manageable, um. I didn't hear feedback, um, from the community saying, oh, this is horrible, um. Uh, but it was, it was definitely manageable, they had enough area to be in a deep end. Um, the kids could be in a deep end, um, so. I think I would make it a little bit larger than it was set up this year, but I'm definitely thinking how we can manage it with three lifeguards. Instead of four on rotation, so that's, that's my projection for this year and that's why the numbers are coming. Those they are. Um. So the part-time wages, um, just asking, it was originally in there as twelve hundred last year. And it was cut down in half, um, and my reasoning was to pay somebody more than. Twelve dollars in, an hour to clear the ice, so we have somebody willing to do it, um. It, the budget did get cut down to six hundred, so basically when we ran out of the money, we stopped clearing it. That did coincide very nicely to the weather conditions, so it worked out. However, um, you know, if, if we had a lot more storms or a lot more clearing. We would burn through that six hundred dollars a lot quicker, this is one person who is very loyal and faithful. To clearing our ranks, he does a great job with a hand-me-down snow blower and shovel. And he comes out like every storm, he's right on it, he's watching, he's assessing. I couldn't ask for somebody to be more attentive and to put his heart into this job and. When he was not there the one year, we did not have anybody clearing it, so I couldn't find someone to clear it, so. Um, if, I mean, that's up to you, if you want the ice skating to go a little longer, um, you know. That's, that's what I'm hoping for, so that's why I went back up to nine, nine hundred, thinking maybe it was a compromise there. Um, still keeping the rec overtime, that's lifeguard overtime and it. Always happens that the staff we do have, somebody has to work overtime over their forty hours. Because you don't have enough staff to keep it to forty. Um, let's see. Nothing's really, travel and meals up a little bit, but um, just wanna make the comment that. That's for my, um, travel expenses to pick up supplies to run the programs that I need. It used to be set at two thousand for a long time, I never used two thousand and I am very frugal. And a lot of times don't even ask for reimbursement, um, of using my personal vehicle to do things, um. But I, I am running over, um. Probably mostly because I'm doing more senior lunches or having to run for supplies for things. But um, a lot of running back and forth to camp as well, especially when I'm running camp, um, so. Uh, the rec conferences training, that is for lifeguard certifications, um. This year we did use it all up. Um. Anything else, I'm just hitting what's really going up here, um. Uh, the pond testing, just going up a little bit on that, this year I did, um. A test four times instead of the three, one of the samples came back and the numbers weren't in the typical range. So I just wanted to retest it.
How do you do it?
What's that?
You do the testing yourself?
I don't, I take it, um, into Eastern Analytical, um, in Concord to.
Got it, but we need to buy the kit, or they just.
They charge you.
Included with the cost of the test.
I don't do the kit, well, they do give me a sample kit to take, to bring the sample in. But I don't do anything more than drop it off.
Got it.
In a very timely fashion. On ice.
And writing down your mileage.
Yeah, right. That's exactly what happens, um. So, yeah, and we do test, for your information, we test, um, once a month. So I do it before the pond opens and then I do it once a month, so we get three samples in. Our pond, just in case you wanna know, always does come back really, really well with the numbers.
Nice.
We, yeah, so, um, it always is very, very low in the, um, bacteria count, so. Um, anyway, alright, postage is down, uh, and that's it. Um, I, you have any questions?
Question, the water testing is reminding me, I feel like it's been a few years, but I remember you telling us about like the milfoils.
I was just gonna bring that up and said to you, I promised you a milfoil conversation, are you ready? Did you wanna have that?
Okay.
So, um.
What is milfoil?
Um, it's an invasive plant that is, that along, um, with a couple other species. Or have really infiltrated Kimball Lake. Um, which flows through some, um, private property and then down into Kimball Pond. Where we swim, so three years ago, I had. Um, looked into how we could, because I was getting complaints about the swimming area at Kimball Pond, um. It, just being unpleasant, because as you would swim, you would be grabbed by the, um, little tentacles of, of the milfoil. So I looked into how we could get that eradicated in the swimming area. Um, plus other, oh, sorry.
Dredge it?
Well, so according to the state, um, they want it removed by, you can remove it chemically. Um, or by hand pulling it with somebody who's certified to pull it. And those certified people, um, you have to pay, um, also to put the chemicals in. I mean, there, there's a cost there too, so, um. The, the discussion that I had brought up a couple years ago was, I mean, the situation is through all the bodies of water. So it's much bigger than just dealing with the swimming hole, but the swimming hole, because it's a little recreation area, I'm trying to manage for swimming. Um, that falls in my realm, but the whole bigger picture, I think, needs to be looked at and discussed. By the board, probably with the conservation commission, probably with, you know, um, maybe buildings and grounds. Or who, I don't know that, you know, that maybe it's just, I don't know, but, um. So the state, when I looked into this a couple of years ago, the state had recommended putting chemicals in the whole thing. And the timing was very, um, unfortunate. When I reached out and got the results from the samples we had submitted, um, and. Uh, it, we couldn't, we didn't have time for a discussion before the budget process started. Um, but anyway, um, it was, they do have grants to put chemicals in the lake. Um, I think there was a matching grant at that time and it would have cost us. I, I think like ten or twenty thousand dollars or something like that to, to do that. So, uh, the concern that I had brought up to the state, I said, well, you know. We, we don't have time to discuss this with the community, cause I'm sure you want community feedback and, and whatever more time to discuss it. But, um, you also have private property that this will flow into, so like, I would think you'd wanna talk to the landowners, whatever. Um, all to get down to the little spot in the pond where I was trying to get cleared for better swimming. So the short, um, easiest solution at that time was just to pay somebody. I asked for five thousand dollars in the rec maintenance fund to hand pull. Uh, which we did, and I wanted to see, um, I said to, to the person who removed it. I said, when you get, because it was an hourly rate, I said, start in this area, go until you get to your five thousand dollars and then. We will stop, which is what he did, and he, he cleared out quite a bit, um, he tracked the amount, he had to report that to the state, what he pulled out. And bagged and everything, so, um, and I wanted to see how long that held. So here we are, I just, um, asked, um. Karen, if we could consider putting another several thousand dollars in the rec maintenance fund for next year. So I can look at, um, getting another area cleared. So this might not be the best way to approach it long-term, um. But the whole water system has an issue that needs addressed, I don't know, um. I think what I had heard from Karen might be more the milfoil expert and maybe can fill in all this. But even putting chemicals in might not last that long either before things return. But I will say too, for Kimball Lake, um, I, I take my canoe out and, and have used that. Lake, um, my kayak and I've noticed, you know, over the course of several years. It's gotten much thicker and even in the deeper spots, it's still, you can't put your paddle in without coming up with stuff. It's, it's, um, it's taken away the, the pleasure of using that area, I don't know how fishermen. Fish in there, um, but it's completely covered, I've gone from back to front on that lake and.
Mm-hmm.
The, the only spot without a heavy covering is like right at the boat.
Boat watch.
Yeah. So.
This guy pulled it, like, I mean, who do we talk to about, like, the options?
Um, well, we can go back to the state and, and have another conversation, they have, you know, specialists who deal with the.
Okay.
Um, invasives, um. So, I, I know they're trying to manage it to prevent a spread, but in our situation, like, it's already gone. As far as it can go, we're at the very back end of it, but I don't know if that makes a difference or not, um.
Is it Amy Smo- Smo- that you?
Yeah, I believe so, that's.
Worth having her come in and meet with the board, just to.
I think so, this conversation is, yeah, it's bigger than the recreation department. So I think, um, you know, definitely that's something to consider, how to approach it, um. So you can weigh in on that, but, um, for the meantime, I would like to consider to looking at. Pulling a small area again.
Um, so that was a few years ago that he harvested or whatever, and so it's lasted that long?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. I don't know if anyone can really answer this question, but like, why wouldn't we just put the money in the budget, like the operating budget? To pay the person to pull the milfoil, like, why do we, why would it go into like a separate rec maintenance fund? So it just feels like it's more like an operating expense, you know, it's, I don't know. Uh, I, does anyone have any thoughts about that?
I don't know why.
Okay.
Just.
So my request was one time, and that's where Neil had put it, because we didn't know, like. Would this be once and done, or, you know, would it be?
Right. For you, so long it would last.
Yeah, it was kind of like a trial and it was maintaining a recreational facility.
Yeah.
So I think that's why he found that spot for it.
Okay.
I didn't put it in the CIP for five thousand next year and then three years out and three years out again.
Hmm.
Just placeholders, cause it's, it's not gonna go away.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but maybe if we could talk to the state and get a sense of maybe what other towns have done, or like, is it? Kind of thing where it's like a hundred thousand dollar project to get the whole thing done, I mean, I have no idea, I'm just making that number up, but. Um, and is that worth it at some point to consider, so you're not in this like endless, like, doing little bits here and there? So it might be helpful to talk to the state about.
My experience is that it is always gonna be an issue and it's a matter of getting ahead of it and staying on top of it.
Hmm.
Um, two communities I'm aware of have fantastic volunteer. Two communities I'm aware of have fantastic volunteer groups, you know. Both are sort of uh uh run by the lake associations to go out and. Well, you know, they have sort of, they have divers involved and they remove it and they just, they're out there all the time.
That would be helpful to understand too, since you said the person has to be like certified and like bail it or whatever for the state. But understanding what the options are, if we had people interested in volunteering to help.
If if they're certified divers, um you're looking at a certified weed puller.
Nice.
Oh, wait, you're a certified milfoil person? Okay, here's our solution.
You didn't even tell us on your interview.
It's a, it's a, it's a weekend class. If you're, if you're a certified diver, you sign up for the weekend class and then you get this. Best practices, because the stuff is pretty brittle and that little tiny piece that breaks off is going to float off and start somewhere else. So.
Did you say pretty brittle?
Brittle.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, some more to come on milfoil.
Okay, there you go. That's it.
Is that it for you?
That's it for me. So you're welcome. Oh, not yet.
No, I was just gonna say, I completely understand it's like a cost benefit analysis to writing down every like trip to Colonial or whatever. But it's important for the town to know the real cost of running things, so you should ask for all your reimbursements.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. I know, but it's, that's really hard. When you rent a Colonial from the Suster Center and like, that's literally what we do. Well, thank you.
Me, uh, we all set for our senior lunch next week?
Oh, are you all set for your senior lunch next?
What time are we supposed to be there?
Um, well, lunch is served promptly at noon.
Hi.
So are you bringing prepared?
Is the chef?
Oh, Jeff is it?
Jeff is the.
Fine. Jeff, you're fine, right? He's still on.
For confirmation.
Okay, so but from your perspective. Jeff, we're good on lunch?
Lunch, we're ready to go.
Yeah.
Awesome.
He's good.
Thank you.
Will you show them, sir? Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Show up and make our.
Can I reheat my side dish in the oven?
Okay. I'll turn on the ovens for you.
Thanks, Paul.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have human services.
Thank you, Paul.
Hi. Nice to meet you all.
How are you?
I'm Vicky.
Hi, Vicky.
Hi.
Steven.
Hi.
Nice meeting you all. Thank you for having me here tonight.
Thanks for being here.
Um, I have a few changes in our budget. Um, and it's pretty much. Insistent with um what it's been before, so I'll just highlight some of the items. Um, so we have our telephone costs that went out slightly with an increase and it was changed to. Reflect the accurate change, which is probably about twelve dollars. Um, our second area is um conferences and trainings. There's been um an increase with membership fees. There's usually about four trainings and meetings that are available for local welfare administrators. And um probably attending three out of the fourth this time around. It was, time didn't allow for me to take all of them because I was newly hired and then training and just. Learning and surviving some of the holidays in the beginning. Uh, so. Most of that line item is going to be used because I have a upcoming conference that I'll be attending next week. Uh, the other area highlighted with the change is for vendor payments. A lot of the general assistance payments that are made directly to vendors on behalf of eligible clients. Um, have been changed to reclassify because a lot of the money that's used coming in for vendor payments. Are from our very generous um donors, so we receive a lot of donations coming in. So the reflected change on that is mostly in our fuel line item. Our housing line item has pretty much been. It's really difficult to predict what those needs would be. Because until people come in applying and looking for um assistance. But rents have continuously been increasing. Over the year.
Oh, sorry, sure. On the vendor payment fee, so this means that donors are actually paying the vendor directly or how is that?
So a lot of the funds that come in, we use a lot of some of the donations and we are paying. So the town is paying the vendors directly.
Okay. And just because this has been a topic lately, how are we receiving those donations? Like, do they?
It's through checks, yeah. It's either they're written out to the town or to the Human Services Department.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we can, we can have a little bit further conversation about what you and I were talking, you know, around yes or this morning.
But I'm trying to think through why we're able to accept these donations for this. I'm thinking about like the skate park and like having to create a whole different number for that. Um, just want to make sure, like, is it just like an account? Like, I don't understand how this is different, I guess.
So we do code it to a specific account, but how is it different, Kelly?
There are two big accounts.
Okay.
There's a human service fuel account and a human service donation. The human service donation, you know, is kind of what, it acts like the rest of all of it here almost. Where those, some programs are funded from this donation, you know, like the Operation Christmas and backpack program.
People can actually send checks to the town for this? Like, is that how it? Okay.
They do.
Okay.
It's how it was set up, but.
Okay.
Just, it's something.
Legacy of.
Definitely need some more digging into on. How that was set up and.
Okay.
It's not going to bring to my attention that we couldn't have that one, but.
Okay, thank you. And I would just be curious how other towns are doing it. Because I am sure other towns are also receiving donations specific to human services. I'm just curious.
Yeah.
That might be a good question for one of your trainings or conferences that you go to. Just want to see what other people are dealing with out there.
Yeah, I know that we're very fortunate with a very generous giving community. So um it's been really helpful to do, meet a lot of the needs that do arise. So um we've been really fortunate to be able to do that. So um the heating fuel line item. As we just discussed and we mentioned, a lot of the heating expenses can be paid through some of those donations coming in. So we did um reclassify. An amount of money that was twenty five hundred dollars towards that line item. Um, and it's because of the donations that have come in. So those have been the changes listed. I don't know if you have any other questions. Um, I can see your notation here about on your um vendor payments housing. Yep. That the budget is a five-year average. Yeah, so um on that note where it says cap, the cap assistance, that was an old note from twenty twenty-three. Okay. And then um if you look throughout the twenty twenty-three actuels and twenty twenty-four. That's kind of like been what has been spent through our housing budget. Right now, we're at about forty thousand. So, yeah, I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Um, so I'm sorry, so what do these numbers go through the year to date? Do they go through September?
So that's from, it's from January to December?
Yeah, it was last week, I think.
Yeah.
I just meant the year to date one, like, how much we've spent so far this year? Like, where's the cutoff there?
Yeah.
Sorry? Okay, understood. So. Like, two and a half months left in the year, basically, and where we've spent. We're almost like seventy-five percent of the way through the year, seventy-five percent of the way through the budget for the forty thousand. So that's why we feel comfortable making it forty thousand again, even though last year's was significantly higher.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
And then again, we do, we do have the ability to have the resources with some of the donations that come in. So that's how we usually balance, try to balance it out.
These donors who come to you and say, like, is there a need or are they just regularly?
Yes, they do.
So I've had a couple of people ask me about um the food pantry.
Yes.
Which I know is sort of a pseudo-town entity. Or maybe it's entirely not a town entity, but you help run it. It's a little unclear to me. I believe it's a, it's its own five oh one C three.
So right now, it's been, it's been in transition.
Okay.
So the original founders of the nonprofit, she retired. And then once they retired, we were looking into some of the certifications through the state, Secretary of State's office. Which um was dismantled. So there was an executive committee put together, there was an operational committee put together with Neil before leaving. And just trying to really um get everything, all the paperwork needed to be able to recertify has been a bit challenging. So the town just decided that we didn't want to, you know, not have people have food. So food insecurity was the priority to remain consistent. So the town decided to just have the Human Services Department oversee the operational pieces. Still have the volunteers that have been twenty-five years in, lots of longevity with the volunteers that are currently working. And very committed and passionate about um continuing to bring food to people. So um we put a word out for donations and um that's how we're supplementing the food pantry at this time. So we have about maybe twenty-five volunteers. Um, the Rotary Club is us, is actually assisting with some of the shopping and they'll submit receipts. I do some of the shopping, um so we have just fully volunteer run at the moment. We have about fifty-seven families that are coming through uh the food pantry.
When you mentioned the recertification, are you talking about their nonprofit and tax exempt status? Are you talking about?
Yes, yeah, so it's all expired and so we need to reestablish that.
Um, are you able to, do you ever give out gift cards to people so they can shop at the grocery store? Or is that like not?
So right now, we're um, we use food vouchers, because we just, we want to just really ensure that it's being used for food. Historically, when um it was under the nonprofit, they did use Market Basket gift cards. We at at times do give out gift cards, like, so it's uh if it's backpacks in school, going back to school. We've given out some gift cards to some of the families, so it's for special projects that we usually use them. But it's mostly towards food vouchers. Yeah.
And so, but people could donate to the food pantry gift cards if they wanted to.
Yes, they they usually do, you know.
Um, I think people are very concerned in line, obviously, the ending. Or I read a headline today, maybe some SNAP benefits are coming back, but that is just obviously federal employees, not.
Yeah.
Many not being paid with the shutdown, so um a few people asked, like, if the town had a plan, like proactive plan. So maybe we can talk more about, I know the state just put up D H S, I saw posted, they're doing mobile food banks.
Yeah.
Um, I think one was in Concord, but just letting people know that the food pantry is available in town and then other resources and.
Yeah, we were just discussing about probably posting and letting people know. Um, I have had discussions with some of the local churches. The community has been right on it. It's been, they've been, I've gotten so many phone calls and also a lot of people already dropping off food. Um, so they will be able to access this. I also spoke with some of the staff over at the schools. And sent out an email with our food pantry application. And um just to let them know that if anybody needs any food at any time, any day, not to just wait for distribution date. But anybody with food need, please just call us and let us know. So we're, we're actually um working on a resource guide um with food pantry, soup kitchens. Um, and just letting people know how could they can access food.
And so is the like official pickup days every other week still?
Every other week, so this is a food pantry week. Uh, that would be Wednesday, the fifth. The next one is going to be the nineteenth.
I wonder, I think we made a move from weekly to bi-weekly during COVID, maybe is my vague memory. And so I'm wondering if maybe we should think about going back to weekly. I don't know, is it, that might be something to talk about. If you think there's a need or if it might help people logistically.
Something definitely to think about.
Yeah, because it would have been the decision of the nonprofit previously. And so I, I do think some of it, I want to be mindful of. That Lisa is doing this above and beyond everything else she's handling in her day to day. Does the previous nonprofit action be recertified or could a new one be founded?
Working on a new one. They were pretty much just wanted to step back.
I have all the paperwork you need to start a nonprofit in three days or less. We can spin it by new nonprofit in a couple of weeks. Apparently, this is my new hobby.
Okay, that's awesome. Thank you. Um, questions?
So I'm reading the town report, report of the Human Services Department from last year. Um, so I can see here that the distributions from the Human Services Department were sixty thousand. And I can see that on the twenty twenty-four actual. But then you've got some extra numbers below it with regards to the Community Action Program of Valnap and Merrimack Counties. Um, so is that information that you get from them? You know what I mean? Like, they'll, they'll distribute the name, or not the name, but the numbers to.
They do, they distribute, they distribute all areas of supported services. That were given to any of the residents in our area, in our community. So we get that report from them when we work on our annual budget.
And then the last number here that, um, it says additional assistance for fuel was also provided in the amount of. And it's like sixteen thousand, six forty-five.
Yes.
But it seems like maybe there's more assistance going out, like, than, you know, just looking at your notation on the housing line. Um, that, you know, we've got, um, you know, that basically we're able to keep this level. With the anticipation of, you know, either not, not needing it all or generous donors. So I'm wondering, you're saying, after here in terms of either money the town spent, money the county community action program spent? Or money we have spent that was donated?
As far as I understand, is that once all those expenses are submitted through finance and through um cap program. Those are the numbers that are protected and put out.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
And one more question, sorry, just I want to make sure I'm not giving people bad info. So if people want to donate to the food pantry, is it, it's a set time and day that they can bring stuff?
So donating food or donating money or checks?
I guess both.
Okay, so um, I'm very part-time, so we usually try to schedule drop-offs. Um, but we've been managing it and the Recreation Department and the Senior Center, they've been so helpful. Anybody that's walking in, they get instructed immediately where to place it. Um, but we do try to schedule drop-offs for food. Uh, we put the word out to when they can come. We just posted a time so people can, you know, feel comfortable that they can just come in and drop off. Food items. As far as um monetary donations, we, we are requesting for the checks to be made to the town of Hopkinton. And under the noted section to just note, uh, it's for the food pantry or any specific area of basic needs that they would like to give to. So if they're wanting to give for Christmas holidays, for to seniors alone, or backpacks, coats. On hats, clothing, any, any medical needs, because sometimes there are medical needs. Um, that they want, really want to make sure that a lot of seniors are supported in that area. So any, any, the, any area identified where they want any money is donated and allotted to, that's what we usually. Um, honor and make sure that that happens.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Richard.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Hey, next up is the library.
Nice. Hello again.
Hello.
Long time no see. Promise I won't be back next week.
You come back as much as you want.
Oh, thank you. I will be on vacation next week though, so you will not see me next week. Sorry. So feel free to ask me any questions as we go. Stop me, I don't mind. Um, our first big change is our computer services. Um, our catalog is going up slightly and CompuCheck, our monthly fee for our servers are going up slightly. But unfortunately, the the benefits of a subscription service are catching on everywhere, so one of our um, software needs for um, computer monitoring for malware is going to a software base instead of a yearly fee. It's going to a monthly fee. And that's the biggest driver because the monthly fee is nearly as much as how much I was paying per year. So thanks Netflix.
Back to the card catalog we go.
No, 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 but um, that's going up like a couple hundred dollars. It's the um, you know, making sure that we don't have spyware on the computers and that if people click on a weird link and it pops up and it says that um, you need to call Microsoft because your computer is being shut down. Um, if people click on that link, that software in the background says like, no, and shuts it, shuts that down for us. Um, they're moving that software.
Got it. It's the malware in the public.
Yes, exactly. Um, it's not all the computers, but it's the most important on the public computers.
Yeah.
Um, and that's going to a subscription model per month instead of per year.
Got it. So can I interrupt really quick? Um, Karen, are we still good? It says preparing live stream and?
It's been saying that the whole time.
But we're still on.
Yeah.
Okay, good, sorry. Just wanted to make.
Oh, no, you're fine.
Thanks.
Jump in there. Okay, um, the product that we're using for that, it sounds like that works pretty well.
They suggested moving to an even better one, which is also part of the increase. Um, CompuCheck is worried that with AI, these spams are just going to get better and that we need more sophisticated software.
Okay. And, and I mean, I guess I'm wondering if there's an alternative that's not, the price is not escalating as fast as this particular product?
The only out.
The game in town, I don't know.
Um, this might be a spoiler for Karen's um, budget presentation in a little later, but um, we might be going out for bid for other companies.
Okay.
I, I have not been able to get my head solidly around all of our IT stuff.
Okay.
And it definitely begs further investigation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And then um, to also spoil Karen's presentation coming up. Take, yeah, um, you're not gonna be able to say anything by the time I'm done. Um, the fuel is going down significantly. Um, so our gallons are budgeted the same, it's just the price per gallon has dropped. So that's taking off almost three thousand dollars from the budget. So that's paying for my increase in software. Uh, the sewer and water is, I budgeted off of what has been proposed from the letters, the increases, and then also my bills from this year. I am one of the meters that are broken, so I get billed at a flat, they just fill me at a certain amount, but um, when they've replaced my meter, I will, I'm hoping it will go down, but I have no actual idea. For the whole three years I've been doing budget presentations, my meter's been broken. Yes, so that will be a fun surprise for everybody. Um, the cleaning service is going up slightly. Um, the equipment, there are just slight increases. There are HVAC. We do preventative maintenance. And we split that between the repairs line and the um, library revenue fund line, and that is uh, going up again, but it's still cheaper than having someone come out. And um, the, they come in and replace all their air filters, they replace our belts. Um, they do a spring maintenance and a fall maintenance. So I appreciate them because I don't wanna go up in the attic and change on two different HVAC systems, air filters. And then I know it's installed properly. The travel meals, I bumped that up a little bit. We're our conferences and um, I have a monthly co-op that I go to. These have moved back to in-person after years of COVID. Um, so we try to meet in-person a lot. We do plan on like, in like January or February to be non-in-person. But also the IRS rate has gone up and I would just like to keep on top of that so that I can continue to reimburse myself for travel and also staff members who go to conferences. I had a staff member go to a conference this year and it was up in the north country, so that like ate up a big chunk. And um, when I go to co-op, I'm going a lot of times down to like Bedford, um, Merrimack, Goffstown area. Postage, I think we've covered that tonight. That's an increase. I haven't had to buy very many stamps. Um, we do sometimes have to mail back books, but we can do library media mail, which is slightly cheaper than a parcel mail, but the biggest part of that increase is our P O box. And then um, the computer office equipment. And this is probably tariff related, the quotes that I've seen for most recent computer replacements has gone up.
The um, are you, do you have any money left in that line so far?
I do so far this year. I had to replace Sorry, I'm counting in my head.
That's all right.
Um, I had to replace four staff computers, two of our, um, they're like mini computers that are cheaper that we run catalogs on, public catalogs. And then we replaced one of the three um, public computers because they were going to, we, the amount we would have to pay CompuCheck to change us from Windows ten to Windows eleven because of how old they were. It was getting to the point where we would be better off getting, replacing the computers. And also all the computers besides my computer, which was replaced right before I started, were replaced last during the fire. So we were on a pretty good maintenance schedule where we're replacing three to four computers a year and after the fire, they all had to be replaced, so they were working on restagging those.
Hmm. And I guess I'm asking if you have money left in that line, can you make any of those purchases before the fiscal year lapses?
Yes.
So that next year's appropriation can go down a little bit?
Yes, I was, I was going to buy some new monitors because we haven't replaced our monitors since the fire, but I just today was able to go down to Concord and get free monitors from the federal government that they have surplus for. Um, so I now have six monitors.
Is that open for anyone or is that specific to?
I think it's specific to, um, you have to fill out paperwork.
Gotcha.
Um, but as a government agency, we were able to get that. And the, and um, it, it was very lucky timing because the person's for a load, so.
Yeah. I mean, if you can spend any of that.
Yeah, I was, so since I don't have to
Yeah.
figure out how to replace the monitors, because I have some old monitors that are like, they're square.
Yeah.
So you know they're really old.
Yeah.
Um, then I will probably replace another computer.
And we're talking about mine and them seven four one, right?
Yes.
Because it shows currently as zero in year to date, but you were listing off some things that.
We also have a capital improvement fund for that.
Got you.
Or a maintenance fund, which is for computers because if I budgeted every year, I would be, have to budget either up and down or the same and then go and replace computers before they needed replacing, whereas if we can put it in the maintenance fund, then I can replace them as needed. And then like right before I started, um, the director's computer was taken out in a power outage. And the power went out, the computer never came back. And that was unexpected replacement. If they'd already replaced the computer on that budget line, they wouldn't have had the funds on that budget line to replace it. And we also have like, um, we have tablets that we use for when we do, um, every week we go and check to see if the late books have made it to the shelf. When, and you know, just didn't scan in, like the barcode didn't scan, reader didn't scan it. And those tablets, last year we replaced one of the tablets because they're no longer supported, so we have to also keep that in mind. And then the other line for that maintenance fund, for the computer maintenance fund pays for our servers, which house our catalog on them.
Um, for the subscriptions, books, videos.
Yes.
Are we waiting on something big to come in in the last part of the year?
So this has been a very exciting time in the library world. The biggest United States book vendor that sells to public libraries has gone out of business or is actively going out of business. Their sale fell through. They were supposed to um, close on a sale the end of September. Um, there is something about who is gonna take the debts on. It um, made the sale fall through. They went and decided that instead of figuring it out, the venture capitalist that owns them is just going to close the company. So they canceled over three hundred of our orders. Um, we have seen the past two months and for August and September, our um, monthly bills for this, for Baker and Taylor were less than half of what we usually build for, and my bills for this month are like, like a hundred dollars.
Because they're just not selling.
Because they're just, um, the creditors foreclosed on their loan. And they weren't paying their, the publishers for the books. So they've gone ahead and the publishers stopped sending them the books. They were um, not very forthcoming over the spring about why we weren't getting our books. They told us it was because they're renegotiating contracts. And that they were looking to get us better deals. And so we saw a little bit of a drop-off. We weren't too worried and then in August and September, it really fell. And then between the beginning of October and mid-October, um, we were getting everything secondhand. They have a warehouse out in Illinois. A local paper picked up that they'd laid off most of the people who work in that warehouse, but the company didn't come out until mid-October and say that they were closing. They don't have a end time, but they've canceled all of our orders. And then we had to scramble to find a new vendor who would take us.
You found one?
We have. It's going to mean that we're going to have to do all of our processing in the meantime in-house. So the staff will have to do that. Um, but we're not the only library dealing with this. It's been on the news in some of the bigger um, like county systems out in like Columbus and um, out in the Midwest where they are more like county-wide systems. Um, it's been on the local news out there because almost every public library did some sort of business with them. And the one I was just watching, the one news article, they're like, this is ninety percent of our business and they're probably closer to a hundred percent of our business. I had picked up some popular books from Gibson's and from Amazon and maybe Main Street Bookends because Gibson's and Main Street Bookends will, when they can, pass along a twenty percent discount. Um, but it was just, these books have reserves on them. Let's go ahead and fill in the gap because we could see it's been, it was canceled. But we were very cautious while we were waiting to see what was happening with not wanting to duplicate um, purchases. But they have since canceled all of our orders and um, Jenny, the youth services librarian who orders the children's books and the youth books and myself who order the adult fiction and nonfiction, we've just gone ahead in the past two weeks and reordered everything that we were going to get and then the, what we would have been ordering for October.
What is the new vendor?
Our new vendor is Ingram.
Ingram.
Mm hmm. It's I N G R A M. And they've been, um, they said they hired a hundred new people. They're working their warehouse two shifts, seven days a week. Um, one of the other big vendor, one of the other vendors said they would only take you if you had more than like fifty thousand dollar a year commitment, which we don't have. I was like, that's almost double what my budget is for that line, so I cannot work with you. Thank you so much. Um, but that's just how they chose to manage it.
Yep.
Ingram's like, we will take everyone and this other company was like, ah, yeah, we will add people slowly and grow slowly, so. Now it's just hoping that we get all those books before the end of the year. But.
Talk about the staff needing to do the processing. Does that have any impact on overtime or your, just like what you're expecting to pay and?
Yeah, so I had a open position for the first couple of months of the year. I had some down on medical leave. And um, they retired and then we rehired some, so I was running short staff at the beginning of the year, so I will be able to have some extra funds left to pay people to come in. I do have some staff who have volunteered to work extra hours to process things and.
Because you're gonna get hundreds of books.
Hundreds, hundreds. Um, I just placed one order that was a hundred and sixty-five titles and a hundred and sixty of those are preparing to ship. Jenny placed another order that's over a hundred titles and that's preparing to ship.
Not that you need unexperienced volunteers, but I feel so confident that if you do that idea and you put that post out there, you'd have so many library.
It would, but the RSAs would not be happy with that because RSAs do want um, volunteers to only do non, um.
Excession.
Yeah, things that aren't in people's job descriptions.
How about unpacking boxes?
Um, I'm, um, I've already have volunteers who shelves, who have volunteered to shelf X. So when we suddenly turn over our new shelves, all at the same time, they can put all those books away.
I cannot wait to see those hop and display.
It was amazing.
And it's all new.
Yes, you will not recognize a single book on the shelf because we'll have to, I mean,
Yeah.
more than half of our new shelves will be brand new books, fresh out of the box. So my fresh out of the box posts on Facebook might look a little obtuse.
Chaotic. I love it.
It's just a table with boxes.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. We're a little behind schedule. You're rounding us out, Karen.
Hey, not as far as behind as I thought we'd be.
Oh, all right. So back on page one. Swear to the beginning.
That's very good place to start.
Is that Vicky? That was excellent, Vicky. You sounded great.
It's taking a solo before you got here.
That's not Whitney Houston.
No, that's Julie Andrews.
Again, skipping over personnel stuff, jumping down to the phone. Based on last year's and the, the spend rate for this year, that's what I, what we budgeted for. I am hoping that we can trim that with this, um, this audit, but we're not there yet. In fact, we just got a, an, a notice from Comcast that their rates are going up twenty dollars a month. So, um, and we did not adjust that, that just from today. So.
Then you call them and you threaten to cancel. Then you wait two weeks and they call you back with a coupon.
Hang on, hang up on them the first three times and then take the really good deal, right?
Yeah, that one.
Yeah.
Speak to a representative.
I kept the conference line the same. With any luck, we'll have a new assessing person and I assume that that's probably going to require some training. Um, we got, got another resume number two today, so I'm pretty excited about that.
I'm sorry. So is it just your, you and the assessor in this part of the budget?
Okay. And, and well, yeah, and the.
Ah, exactly. Okay. Got it. Not Beverly.
Yes. Yep. Printing is, uh, your town report, again, basing that on what this year was base and then a slight increase. Advertising.
Can I ask before we move off of town report printing? Did we have a lot of excess of those from this year or did they all, they all get grabbed? Okay. All right. Yeah. Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
How many do we make? You don't have to know that.
I don't, I don't know.
Kelly, how many town reports do we print?
We'll find out.
There was a note, um, I think in here that I, a pre prior year note that I took out, it said something about, we've got the number right now, you know? But then it was seriously under budgeted. So I'm assuming we'll probably need a few more, but, um, we'll see. Advertising, this, you know, again, it looked like it could come, could come down a bit just based on what we'd spent this year. Dues and subscriptions, that's our NHMA dues, all of those, um, are, I'm just glancing down through, are expected, um, and have actually already let us know what, what it's going to be or have actually invoiced us. So that number's pretty solid. Uh, the energy committee asked that we include our membership to Clean Energy in New Hampshire this year. Um, so I included that. I think they've been paying that out of their own pockets. Town meeting sound system. Again, guessing, going with what we've done in the past, it looks like it had been pretty steady. And this year came in very close to budget. Uh, office supplies. That went up slightly. Um, we were just seeing it, you know, again, the trend for this year is going to be over seven, seven nine hundred based on kind of where we are in the year. And we supply a lot of departments out of this building. Postage. We, I think, uh, the, um, the large jump in spending this year is based on how the postage meter works. You put money on it at different periods of time. So if we put a, you know, maybe we should have put five hundred dollars on last December, but it went on in January. So we look like we're ahead, but we were just slow in spending. So we want to level that out. And we're also, Kelly and I were talking today about being a little more conscious and like when, make sure we have all of the ever source invoices. You know, make sure they're not late, but make sure that we have them and put them all in one batch so that they're going in one envelope. Takes a little bit of, yeah, kind of awareness, but it's, it, it maybe will help. It'd be just postage, just nuts. Um, nothing for books and subscriptions, executive or select word expenses. That, that Kelly phrased is the select word slash fund. So.
This is our discretionary fund.
Um, no, it's, yeah, for your discretionary expenses.
What are you doing twenty twenty-three?
Yeah, no kidding.
I don't know what was happening in twenty twenty-three.
I got a nice watch right here. That's okay.
So we've only spent thirty-three, we've only spent thirty-three hundred dollars out of it?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So.
Good for us.
Yeah, good for you. Um, there, there may be, there may be a request for you, for you guys to spend some money at our next meeting. So.
Oh, really?
Five hundred bucks or something in that neighborhood. Um, website. Another one I really am still getting my head around. And so I decided to basically, you know, keep it on par with where it is. I got an email, I think it was the week before last from Civic Plus saying, well, you know, the platform that you're running on is at end of life.
The town one?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course it is. Yeah, no, that checks out.
Yeah. So I called the guy and we're going to, we're going to have a little meeting. Um, and I would love for you to be there when he sends me a date. Just, I'm not sure whether we want to continue with Civic Plus. Are you, are you okay?
Does anybody want, does anybody want any popcorn? I brought, I brought a ton of popcorn.
Love to eat popcorn.
I would love to be at that meeting. I just swallowed around.
Yeah, okay. Listen, I have like a ton of different ones.
Round or square?
I have small, with a deli container.
It just, I was so tickled, but of course the website is at the end of its life. I'm like, yes, obviously. Yes.
That is good popcorn. Biggest moment?
I'll just share this one with Alyssa.
Lauren, Kelly?
So the website, um, I got at least out of him that it's not, it will be supported into twenty twenty-seven. Um, you know, of course he wants us to upgrade with him for, you know, it's going to be an additional three to five thousand dollars a year over the, the nine. And depending on how we want to migrate and how fancy we want to migrate, that could be another ten, up to ten thousand dollars. Or if you want the really bare bones, it's, you know, like a thousand. So I need to talk to this guy. I think we might want to look at new options. This is a good time to do it. Um, so I've sort of pumped the brakes with him. We'll take a look at what he's proposing. And then maybe in the next, you know, six months, look for somebody.
Yeah. And what I would love to do is just take a peek at some other surrounding towns in New Hampshire, reach out to them and ask who's hosting them, who they're using. Uh, because everything you're saying sounds ridiculous.
We just did this in Bradford and it took us, it took us quite a while because we were sort of slow at it. Um, and we didn't want to spend a whole lot of money, but we looked at, you know, four or five different, you know, fairly low cost options. And, you know, there's, is a pretty simple website, but there's, there's, there are better things out there, I think. Uh, but in the meantime, we're going to hop along and limp along with what we've got for another year, I think. And then get from there. Um, jumping into IT again. I was looking at the expenses today and it seems like some lines are overspent. Obviously the replacements because we, um, had to replace some computers based on the, the Windows ten, eleven issue. Um, but it doesn't seem like other lines are tracking at the same rate. So IT, you know, I, I budgeted it level. I think we can get, get through it lovelily. How did he only budget thirteen thousand? Yes, this was removed. Um, and again, I want to, I know there are, ours places where we can um, get more complete service and have a better handle on what we've got. And, you know, like you were saying, is this the best, whatever software? antivirus or anti spyware.
So the increase of seven thousand dollars in computer replacements, this is basically you bringing the budget up to what we've actually, what we've actually been incurring. So it was like at least last year and this year.
Yep. It looks like it's, it's been tracking high.
Yeah. But we're budgeted to level. Yeah.
Um, I got, just got an invoice today. There was a big mistake on it. So that was a red flag to go back and look. Turns out there had been a new computer brought online that, you know, falls under our annual or, you know, monthly support. You know, we don't have, I don't feel like I have a handle on that. And we should, we should have a central location where we know which, you know, know what, when your computer was purchased, when it needs to be replaced, what sort of software you got on it. And make sure you have the appropriate, you know, malwares, antivirus, all that stuff. And I, I just, this is, once we get done with our phone and electric, this is going to be the next one.
In that same vein, when Rose was talking about the malware on the library computers, have we historically gone in on a joint uh, subscription package for that type of software or?
Same company. And again, from my standpoint, three months, four months into this, they tell you, you do this and this, this is what we recommend. And then they just, you know, you say, yes, do it or don't do it. And there's really not a whole lot of conversation and it, you know, they'll say, well, we're going to do it for the fire department. We're going to do it for, you know, town hall. There, to me, there's just a missing piece. And I actually spent forty-five minutes on the phone. I may have mentioned it in a meeting. Um, and I walked away with a little bit better sense, but it sounds like we don't have, other than like a very basic agreement to, you know, troubleshoot if a computer won't start or something like that. They bill us for everything, you know, you call up, I'm, I'm, I got broke for that phone call, just asking, hey, what are we?
Yeah.
What, what's our deal? So I feel like we can do better. Okay, that's IT stuff. Now, Clark, we did.
And, um, town IT.
Yep.
Lives with used slash department heads. Does that sound right? Like?
Yeah.
Their own IT.
Some of it gets, it bill, or, you know, um, charged to this, that account, the forty-one thirty-five. And some goes to actual departments. Library does theirs for the most part separately.
Okay. Just Karen.
I, I, I.
But like if Paula needed a new computer, right? That would come out of your.
Forty-one thirty-five.
Yes. She doesn't have a line item for that.
No. Yep.
But if the buyer cheeky new computer, does he have, do they have an IT?
I know that part of some of what he pays for is covered under his budget and I, so I'm not, I don't have a good answer to that question.
That's okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get my head around is, you know, who's paying for what? Do we deparse it out to each department so that we know, have a better sense of what each department costs us? I don't know. That's a, another conversation. Revaluation of property, I'm on page nine. These are, again, the tax map updates. The online tax map updates and the tax maps that hang in the back. Uh, assessing services, um, our avatar assessing software. Fees for deeds, I kept that level. Record storage, that's the, um, image silo. Where the, we have the online record storage, not the historic records, but the, well, they are historic, the property records.
If they're property records, I'm, just because I'm trying to figure it out. How do we determine what goes under reevaluation of property versus what goes into the planning department? You know, really misunderstanding here.
So anything that, back in the day, we all, we had property, had a folder for each piece of property. And that's what is now all digitized into your silos. So things like deeds or, you know, um, any relevant document that pertains to that property would, would and should go in there.
Okay. And is, um, is that amount, are those amounts low because fees are still coming or just because we didn't have to do as much this year?
Record storage?
Yeah.
That gets billed, um, in increments.
So we might.
There's more coming.
Dead.
Yeah. Professional services, that is our assessing service.
Can you help me understand the note that says use forty thousand dollars in covered funds to offset twenty twenty-five? Does that mean that like the?
So the budget was for fifty-six in twenty twenty-five.
Yep.
Um, so far we spent thirty-five.
Yep.
We did spend, we had money left over from the revale, I believe. Whether, was it some part of the?
It was twenty-four budget funds that were in summer into twenty twenty-five. We spent them in twenty-five, but they don't show on this report or because it's just using prior.
So if you take your twenty twenty-five year to date and add forty thousand, that's how much we've actually spent on assessing professional services. And that's why we're, it's not actually that big of a leap. It's not a thirty thousand dollar leap in the budget. It's awkward the way it looks.
Right. And is that the plan that budgeting was done? Was the plan to work our way into this line item?
So I, I don't know what the plan was. I'm not sure where the forty thousand dollars, what wasn't done that would have, unless it was just budgeted and, you know, you didn't have that many abatements or you didn't have that many, you know, issues that the assessor had to do because there's kind of, building permits that he's got to check out. He's got to check his, his, do a cyclical number of, of buildings. But then it's also this year he had abatements, which I know that drove, that is, that's something that's billed separately. It's not part of like the package, um, deal that we have with him. So today, this year's, um, would have gone way up.
Um, Stephen and Sabrina, did it feel like there were a lot more abatements this year than previous years or did it feel?
I don't think so. That's just my like.
Oh, yeah. Just you're like.
Not a data driven answer because I don't have the numbers. My sense.
Revo year, right? Or was it?
Twenty-four was a revale year and according to Kara before she left, you know, we had something like fifty abatement requests that were triggered by that revale and the highest assessment.
Yeah.
Which she felt like, you know, usually we have, you know, three to five to ten a year and this was a huge year.
Wait, for abatements? Three to five in normal years?
You know, that's what she told me.
That sounds so low.
That's sound low. Maybe you're right.
I, I don't know.
I don't remember what we did in twenty-four, why the.
I know, I'd have to go back.
Why it didn't get spent?
Yeah. So what's our, the new contract that we have? What's the cost of just the contract, not the extra stuff?
So the data verification is the thirty-five, two fifty. That's the, the, every, every year he's going to go out and verify data on a portion, like.
A third or, yeah.
The properties in town. The hourly general assessing, that is abatements, that is pickups, the bu- building permit kind of stuff, or the pickups is underneath. But the, um, other miscellaneous things, you know, current use, um, stuff like that.
What is pickups?
Pickups are, um, he's got, so you're building a house, you don't finish it. He's going to note it that he's going to go back and visit it next year around April to see how far you have come along and whether we can fully assess you at that point.
Got it.
Just changes to properties that need follow-up.
Gosh, so we think we're going to, that's wow. Crazy how much that is if you look at it all at one place.
And so it used to be broken into different places?
It looks like part of it, uh, previously was budgeted in the CIP. So we've pulled in.
Right. The five-year revale part was in it? Yeah.
Yeah. And I'm not sure, it left nine thousand out there in the CIP. So, um, that's been pulled into this.
Okay.
I feel like we should come up with a slang term that means like, we brought this back to actual.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, I. Don't need this, I don't think we can get this right now, obviously. I think that mine is just having a hard time is going from the number in twenty twenty four to the proposed number in twenty twenty six. And I can see like you broke it all out, it was so lovely, but I'm just curious, like what? Did we do in twenty twenty four? What happened that year that that was the number versus, was it changing assessors? Because we changed assessors, was it?
That was the last year with the previous assessor and we started with a new assessor this year, which is definitely part of it. I, I'm guessing because you had a revale, that you paid for your revale out of one of your capital reserves.
Probably, I think we do have a, a revale capital reserve.
And that would have lowered our cost for that year?
Out of the operating budget.
Yeah.
It would have, his efforts would have been directed towards the revale and there may have been some efficiencies there, but I, I don't. I don't have a good answer for you there.
Revaluation CRF.
Nope.
Is it possible or reasonable to get? And you can like shake your head no, to get more details from twenty twenty four in that line item?
Yeah.
We're gonna have to pull invoices and look at what he was actually billing for.
Yeah.
Just because as we're going through this so far, that is one of the.
Big jumps.
The big jumps. I want to feel really solid. In like, why was it this and why is it that and what is happening?
Yeah, even, even with as many abatements as we've had this year, our year to date's at thirty five, but is that? Where we're saying that the forty comes in to offset all the.
Forty was spent early, that was the first, because it was encumbered, that was the first chunk we spent.
Okay.
And then we spent this additional thirty.
The actual cost this year in totality has been seventy, well, almost seventy six.
Yeah, to date.
To date. Offset by the encumbered amount being there.
Mm-hmm. So yeah, I think just to follow up on what Alyssa just asked for, you know, not only what did we do in twenty twenty four, but. And just, you know, kind of round numbers is fine, but what, what did we spend seventy six thousand on?
And I also want to acknowledge that if you're like, we have time to pull the info, but not time to analyze the info. Like let us know and perhaps like, I have time, I'm happy to come in and volunteer time. I'm also gonna volunteer Vicky, who has more finance experience than me. Um, but all that to say like. If you're like, I can gather it, but I do not have time to actually sit down and read them or whatever, just like flag for us. Um, just because I think this, that'll be something we just want to feel really confident in.
Yep, no, I'm.
Slash understand what happened. Also, I'm so sorry, I have to stand up.
No, that's good. Also, revaluation is really confusing and is consistently a trip, a tripping point for people.
It is really confusing. Like a weird math word problem.
Yeah.
So you do, you do.
And I get it that it's in our best interest to understand the true value of the.
No, I know. It's like an unfunded mini. Yeah, we don't just do it for fun.
Yeah.
The, a portion of the town you have to visit every year, which is, you can, some people do one fifth, some people do a quarter. Because in a, within that five year cycle, um, you have your pickups, which would be your, your, just your changes that get noted during the year. And then, um. You have, you, you have your just general stuff, you know, so he's got the data verification, that is the chunk that he visits.
Yes, so. It does, just because like if we're, we're always visiting the same proportion of the town, then you would think that we would be like roughly able to estimate.
That, that, that particular line in his contract is thirty two. Or thirty five two fifty, thirty five two fifty, thirty five two fifty, it is straight. Okay. Through the, the five year contract.
Yeah. Right. So you like this person?
I have not been impressed, to be honest.
Sounds like a grabby old lady, don't I?
No.
I don't like the IT people. I don't like my board.
Every year we cut the legal budget, I, I know that it's a curse upon us that we're gonna go beyond our budget, which appears to be what happened this year.
But didn't we pay like a settlement and that's why it's inflated this year? What's my memory?
Well, we just paid it. Did that one hit this?
I think there's a different one that says legal se- settlement that has a zero, zero, zero right now.
Does that count?
I don't know if we've used that one though, because it's been at zero for so many years.
Ah.
Like a little bit fun.
So that settlement that we just paid Kelly, that's gonna hit the settlement line with a zero dollar budget? Oh, okay. Okay.
Yep.
Got it.
I upped legal, we still have, um.
Pending lit, pending lawsuits.
Pending litigation with PSNH, that's floating out there. I got an email not too long ago about that and I haven't heard anything since then.
I would, do we? Do we want coverage at town meeting?
And I think, yes, but that's just, I know after last year you were like, do we really need it, but.
But I have very distinct memories of sitting in the audience and seeing. Whoever was our coverage walk up and take the mic to answer a question. I can't say it that frequently, but.
Thirty five thousand dollar budget, that's.
Five hundred dollars.
Probably more than that, they're there for like four or five hours.
Thousand, twelve thousand.
You know, New Year's, so we have this coming up, and we could all make a New Year's resolution to need legal less.
We need other people's help with that.
Want to do that without hearing from Sarah.
Oh, definitely. So let's, yeah, let's put a pin in that, because this is for us to go through it, not to like.
Right, yeah.
Especially because it's. Okay. So legal, we can talk more about that number. But if this was a bad year for legal, I feel like. We had a lot of stuff going on. Other, it really does feel like, it's hard to predict, it's impossible to predict, in fact.
Yes.
So we do our best. Okay, what do we have next? Is, are we good to move on from legal? Well, I'll think about Stephen's question, do we need? Representation at town meeting? People might look to you, Stephen.
Can't answer the question. Lot, lot of communities.
I just wouldn't really want.
And now, but their legal line was like sixty thousand dollars. Other reasons, I think.
I just don't want to see the meetings grind to a halt since we're already a very engaged community.
True.
Who sticks around for a long time and so. To have to stop the meeting or be unable to proceed with something to save a thousand dollars. Does make me anxious, because if we had to table something out of a town meeting, I think.
That's very rude.
Scheduling nightmare, yeah, but all it takes is one, it just takes one.
The later town meeting goes, the less likely things are to get tabled, I've found.
Okay.
Um, general government buildings, forty one ninety four, we're on page thirteen. Running down through. Uh, base building, we are looking at, um, and separately, it's sort of as with that lease, we're looking at. What that is in there, you know, there's phone in there with, there's internet in there. Um, somebody, I guess Alyssa said the other day that we're definitely, they have their own internet, so we're, that is. We are chasing. Town hall electricity. Again, budgeting based on sort of this year. Even with increases, I feel like our budget, you know, we're in good shape. Um, and that's same with Bates building, police station. You know, I looked at trends, I looked at where we were, there was a lot of, take, take year to date. Divide it by nine and multiply it by twelve, kind of to see where we're trending and. Budgeting based on that.
Which is why the fire departments went up, but most everyone else's are just a modest.
Yeah.
Decrease.
When you get. Got something that was electric.
I think the fire departments went up so much. Oh, sorry, I should have gone like two more times back.
Do you think it was like community power or something that we thought that we were gonna have so much good savings?
Thank you, Kelly.
Hopfire station and I, you know, again, it's. Currently about a hundred and forty one bucks a month. So. Highway garage is pretty level. Nothing, oh, library was the one that was, but we don't pay for that. Their electric bills are huge. Sluster Center's not bad. Think we've gone through with the exception of. The horseshoe tavern, which was disconnected, we've gone through and basically every, um, electric. Bill is justified. Although, everyone that Greg came in with today was one street, one. Or zero, Sweet Street or some, Spring Street. He wasn't sure what that was. But I think it's, I think it's the feels.
Well, isn't that one of the bridges right here?
Yep.
Oh, that one. Que- question, what is Rowl Bridge?
That's the covered bridge over by the dam.
Oh, that one, right, right, right.
Leave it has an alarm on it, a, a fire alarm.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's what I was told.
Okay, where are we now? Oil?
So we're, yeah.
Yeah, we got a favorable rate this year, huh?
Yep.
For heating oil. That's providing nice wickle room.
Fire station propane, that gets filled every other year. This is gonna be a fill year.
On the pellets at the fire station, have we just not ordered those this year? Is that why that year to date's so low?
Yep, and he said he was going to be ordering them soon. He'd likes to, to take it down and get as much of the. As many of the old ones out as he can before he dumps in a bunch.
Yep.
Do we know what happened with the water at town hall? Do you remember when?
The Hopkins Village precinct increased their rates.
But it looks like it's twenty twenty three actual was high, then it went down, then it went. Back up again.
There was a declassification from the Bates.
Oh, okay. Okay. Alright, so between the two, yep. But it was hitting the same account.
Yeah.
Yeah. Water sewer cleaning, um, the cleaning is going up slightly.
Did you say this is just review and we're not supposed to suggest changes?
Well, no, I just didn't want to go down like a rabbit hole, like debating.
Okay.
She didn't want was going to be the hour long conversation about.
I think you can bring up questions and concerns, but maybe there's things we need to put a little pin in for further discussion.
Um, okay, yeah, I just thought that perhaps. Um, that we should take a closer look at the water for the Kentucky Fire Station. Which is forty one ninety four for twenty dash zero four. Um, because we're already at nine hundred and twenty three dollars year to date. I mean, I don't know how often they bill. Do we anticipate another bill before the end of the year?
This was printed out in our last bills.
Okay, okay. Cause they're anticipating, right, eight and a half percent. Increases year over year for five years, I think is what they said. Um, I'm not, it's too late for me to do the math in my head, but you know, just keep that in mind for this line item. Oh, rescue operation building, yeah. Oh, nice.
And building repairs, are we just trying to match act- actual?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stay, stay on track with what's, what's.
Um, I brought this up last year, I think possibly the year before, but there's something about the expenses for the sluster center cleaning. That always just gets me. I don't know why it's so expensive. I mean, I know there's like the kitchen, but police, the garage are zero.
Well, the police, the police pay somebody to do it, but they, it comes out of their budget.
Okay. So that's why those are zeros, but like town halls. Like a fraction of sluster.
How does sluster compare to the library?
The library was one thousand two hundred and five a month, I think.
Yeah, the library and sluster are both the same and then town hall is small and it's, it has to do with the frequency. They're here like for an hour on Sundays in this building.
But I assume they're at those places a lot more.
More frequently, uh, public bathrooms getting more use.
Yeah.
Kitchen.
Right.
We also have, um. Oh goodness, what's I'm looking for, uh. More at risk populations frequenting both the library and the sluster center, so. Um, a greater need for. IRI gene.
We could, that might be another one that we look at after we get to do. The IT and, you know, just, just, it doesn't hurt to keep people on their toes.
It's right, exactly. Okay. Are we done with government buildings? We're under regional planning?
Yes, sanitary, you have a regional planning. Um, these are numbers from, talking about Hampshire Regional Planning, based on population and their. Uh, per capita.
What pages? I'm sorry, what page?
Nineteen, top of nineteen.
Oh, okay.
So we have more than six thousand people in town or they estimate next year will?
I'm not sure where they get that estimate, but I've heard, I've heard fifty nine and change and I'm just over six, so.
Okay. I've grown.
Growing pains. Sorry.
Skip down to.
Around patriotic purposes, this one's usually. One line, isn't it?
Two lines after.
What are we?
Oh, wait.
Humanity, well, I guess that's, nevermind, that's gonna be, um. Those.
Dan.
Dan's game. Health administration, actually, that's before.
Patriotic purposes?
Yep, uh, forty one, forty four eleven.
What page is it?
Uh, thirty six. So this is the animal control officer. I did budget somewhere in here and I think I put it under executive part time, because I wasn't sure where else to put it, but it would seem to fall into. Health administration and adding a whole new line, um, stipage for the health officer. But I placeholder it in executive for now. Um, cap, that was their standard annual request. We also received a request from Casa for five hundred dollar donation. I don't know how you feel about that.
Well, I will not prepare that decision because I'm on the board, but.
I love that.
I do love the organization and I will say a lot of towns give money. I was a little surprised that we weren't on the list.
Bradford did just start in the last, I don't know, three or four years, start participating in that. And one thing that that sold me on it was, and I had not yet checked for Hopkinton's numbers is I was amazed at how many kids receive services.
It's an amazing organization.
Do you, do you happen to know how many?
I should, I don't though. But so wait, is where is that showing up as a request?
I had, I put it under health agencies and hospitals. That's kind of where, um.
And that request was five hundred, you said?
Five hundred, yep. We can, we can come back to that one.
So if I'm reading this correctly, the, the community action program asks the town to contribute six thousand dollars and last year they provided two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars of service and assistance to residents.
Yeah, here in our one town.
Your one town.
So amazing.
That seems like money well spent.
This is a letter sent with their request.
You guys know what Casa is, right? I do indeed.
Good.
My friend is a, an advocate, like a, you know, volunteer, speak for the child kind of person.
Port-appointed special advocate Casa.
Yeah. Casa, if you will. That is what we call them.
What are we on now?
Patriotic, have we gotten to patriotic?
Patriotic.
Where is that?
Forty forty, forty-three or forty? Oh, page forty-three.
Oh, yeah.
Now, it's, it's forty-five something.
Band Memorial Day. Wow.
Forty-five eighty-three is the down number, um, so it's been three hundred, three hundred dollars for a number of years. The bill usually comes in October.
Where are we? I'm so sorry. We're on page forty-three. It's actually the band even though it says hyphen flags in the line item.
We're not quite sure what it is.
Okay.
Except that we've been doing it and they may be doing something with flags.
Okay.
Um, we were waiting for the invoice to see exactly what.
More to come on that.
Yeah, and the band concerts would help things down the ones.
Not be confused with.
Usually comes in October.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it that folks get paid to play in the band?
I was wondering that actually too. And what is the money for?
I mean, I know they use the gazebo and so is it the hundred dollar fee to the rec department?
Yeah. Wait, what?
Yeah.
And so they, the band members actually get paid? Maybe this goes to.
Doesn't sound right to me.
I wonder, I just wonder what this twenty-seven hundred is.
I know that Kearsage Community Band is, gets paid. They get a little bit of money. They get, you know, you, you pay them to perform. It's like three hundred bucks.
Okay.
And then they just, they get, you know, a little bit to make it. An incentive for them.
It looks like we've been consistent the last few years.
What do, I mean, can we pull the invoice from last year and see if it says what service we were paying for?
Yeah.
Pouring rain?
Yes, it's pouring.
It is? I just heard, it's like.
I really hope my windows are closed. I did not know it was going to rain.
Maybe they use this money to tune up the instruments. That's true. I mean, I'm not, I just, I just am curious.
Yeah, no.
It's twenty-seven hundred dollars if you're one of us.
For right now, but we'll wait.
Perhaps.
Maybe.
Perhaps.
I was also wondering if it was like a payment to the Rotary as part of the flags.
Right, the forty dollars. I just wanna like.
Not to the Rotary. Okay, we need to go dance in the rain.
Okay, so can we look at housing very quickly? This is the.
That was the.
Okay, that's the period.
Yes.
Forty-four.
Oh, I just went right there.
Economic development, I wasn't quite, this one.
Classic.
Left it in there.
Whatever.
I think we'll do, I think we'll do something with it. I'm just not sure what.
I feel like we should definitely come up with a plan before we ask for that amount of money.
Mm-hmm.
I know, so the EDC meets Wednesday. Um, and I think we said last time that we'll take up the position again next week.
Assuming you and Jeff had some work time.
Yeah, and I, I think after Wednesday, the the draft will go to Jeff to see what his thoughts are and hopefully come to you guys for next Monday.
Have reimbursed by tip.
So, okay, so that's, the economic development committee is, is revalue or reevaluating what needs to be, or what their direction should be, or they?
No, I mean, I, no, I mean, I think the EDC has already voted on the mission goals and objectives that we talked about last time, but I guess my sense was that part of this budget discussion was what to do with the director position, cause that's the biggest driver of this budget.
Right.
And that, that conversation, we sort of put a pin in to come back to next week.
Okay.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, so we need to come back to the conversation of what are we doing with the open EDC role?
Right, cause the, the EDC would like it to be filled, to be posted and filled. And, but then there was a question about what, what is the position gonna be doing?
Right.
And does it align with what this board thinks the position ought to be doing?
Right, are we actually looking for economic development or are we looking for community development or is it something different? And how's that fit in the grand scheme of things? Yeah, same age, so it's, it's a pull-up conversation on if we were to ask the town to fund this line item, like what would we be getting out of it?
And it, it, it may be misnamed here, you know, it could be economic development, could be community development, could be
Hundred percent.
Website development.
Stop it. Don't tease me. I'd be so happy. I'd be so happy.
I know, I mean, can we get rid of computer tech and just hire an in-house IT person?
Websites communication, that's.
Well, yeah.
Who's the new volunteer IT person for the town of Hopkins, as I kept listening to this conversation?
But really, if there's like bits and pieces of. Sorry. Oh, little bits and pieces of like unfilled needs, um, I mean, seriously around like website management and like communications and other things that if we sort of reimagine this roles, that it's less of the, you know, classic, what you might think of as an economic development director, like how I think Jeff thinks of it, is like somebody's like bringing in tons of new business and reimagine it as something a little more, um, like holistic dynamic, I don't know.
Kind of see it as polishing what we have. You know, we've got a bunch of great efforts underway. We need to find some money for Fountain Square.
It's grants to. Aspect, cause we don't have anyone doing communications, except sometimes you posting.
They're posts very lovely things on a regular.
I mean, not, not, no, not to knock our current Facebook posts, which are very informative and lovely. I just mean, if there was somebody who could be like a little more proactive about like.
Well, that's what I'm hearing from, from Vicky and, and Alyssa is, and sort of my observation is that this younger generation. They want things delivered to them. They're less excited about having to go out and find the information like us old timers.
I would just, just add.
Encyclopedias.
I mean, if we're depending on how this position where it lands, I mean, I, just keep in mind that half of it's from the Tiff district and that has a pretty specific sort of purpose for it. And so if we change the sort of the job drastically, we may not be able to pay for it from the Tiff anymore.
I have lots of ideas, but that's.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. So, but this is, this is like the total amount that they would be paid or this is? No, it's, that's the total amount they're paid, cause it's a halftime position, but half of that, so.
Right?
On the revenue side, comes in from.
Yeah, it comes on the revenue, budget of revenue.
So we're actually paying twenty-five.
Yeah, so this is the entire town share, we get half of it back from the Tiff.
So I put it in there, sort of, I left it, left it in there as a placeholder, just because we haven't settled on anything yet.
No, we haven't.
Did you, and I should know this, cause I'm on the committee, but I've missed a couple meetings. Did you get any feedback from the committee about any of these other expenses?
No.
Okay, okay, then I will.
Like, if you wanna float it past them.
I will, because I don't know if they you know, need all of these expenses in there. I don't know, but I'll.
Yeah, there's professional seminars, conferences, and then the Chamber of Commerce stuff.
So, so we're gonna have like a come to Jesus conversation about the economics. Yeah, I mean, Stephen and Jeff are working on a job, a refreshed job description, right?
Um, that's the idea before next week, yes.
Theory.
Yeah.
Okay, so please, I'm sorry, I just wanna verify, Stephen, when we had our discussion at our last meeting, was that last week?
Yes.
Oh, my God, okay, yeah, so last week, um, and I was flagging that I disliked the wording of that bullet, but are you saying that whole thing was just like adopted by, I can't be right, cause you guys haven't met yet?
That is, we've, no, that's, we have adopted all of that.
Oh, that's already done?
Done.
So why were we talking about it?
Because.
They wanted us to ratify it, to say like, so what they did is they did all the work and then they agreed to move it to us.
Right.
So they voted on, we stand behind this, we're sending it to the select board now for their approval.
But we didn't approve it.
Not yet.
We said we wanted to talk about the job.
Right, okay, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
It's all kind of interrelated.
Yeah.
I'm gonna step in the aisle. Isn't this a little bit like the tail wagging the dog? I just keep seeing that, like the economic development committee is saying, this is what we wanna do. But I, I feel like the board needs to kind of uh, no offense to the efforts of those people either, cause it, you know, lots has been accomplished and
Right.
And moved forward, but I think it might be time to step back and take stock of what was accomplished. You know, what didn't get done, what, what what steps were made in the right direction or in a, in a good direction and what maybe didn't pan out and then you know, not, uh, there's definitely tons of work to be done, but it just seems like I hope we're not gonna try to keep doing the same old thing, just cause that's what we're used to doing.
And that gets at the, the come to Jesus discussion we have to have about do we need a halftime paid employee? And if we do, what are they actually doing? But yes, I agree somewhat with you that like I agree with you. I will say, I don't know if that idiom fits exactly, but I know what you're saying.
I think that they were working off of, cause you said this was done over the summer. I think they were working off of the previous charge.
Yeah.
With the idea that we were saying the role would eventually be refilled. And so I think they were just continuing on the path that like they had already been set on.
Yes.
But I, I do agree with pulling up to say what was supposed to be accomplished, what was accomplished and what needs to be accomplished.
I mean, I look at our, the, the water and sewer, I mean, our, our sewer is directly tied to water and the water situation needs money badly.
Yeah.
And I get a little nervous if we're gonna commit ourselves to spend money in another direction without having a plan there. Um, because I, I, I just, if something goes south, it's gonna fall back on the town.
Yeah.
So that's my.
I'm sorry, I did not follow what you said just now. Are you saying that like the grant writing is important because we've got aging infrastructure? Or are you saying like potentially this money is better spent directly on infrastructure?
Yes and yes, and I mean, I think we should be looking for grants for all kinds of things. I, I have concern if there's a catastrophic failure in the CDP water.
Yep.
You know, what happens? I don't think.
I have no idea.
I think, I think that they are stretched at this point and I don't know how they would han- handle some kind of catastrophic.
Yeah, you're not just talking about.
Or event.
Yeah, no, I get it. You're not talking about capital expenditures. You're talking about crisis management.
Uh, uh, both, because crisis management and crisis prevention is gonna involve capital.
Right, okay.
So.
Yeah.
I just, it just.
No, it's good to air what worries you. We wanna know. So I agree. And I guess we all need to do some thinking before next week on this issue.
Can I ask a favor? Can, and this is a Sabrina favor, can you send out a prompt about the direction of the conversation? Because I think it could go in one bazillion directions and it's like what is gonna be the most productive conversation for us to have? So a, a direction of where you're hoping not what you're hoping we decide, but what you're hoping we discuss would be helpful since it's such a large topic.
Isn't, to me, to me, the way to tackle it is figure out the mission value and goals part, cause then that should inform the decisions that have to be made after that.
So the thing we were debating last week?
Yeah. Cause I don't know how you figure out, the director does, if the question of what's the mission.
But I'm not actually sure based off this conversation, that is even the prompt, right?
I know, I'm just suggesting one thought.
So I have had asked Beverly to pull together some information on kind of like what's been done, what's been spent, what are the results, um.
That's great.
And pull that together.
Because, yeah, I think I have to think about this more, because I, we do have the basic question of like, do we want that position? So then it's like, if we get to yes on that, it's like, what does it look like? But I'm still hung up on, which I was also like five or six years ago when we had this debate originally, like, do we need this position? So, I don't know, there's thought on that, now I can't remember.
I guess we there's plenty for a body to do.
Right, that's where I was going, actually. I was gonna say like the grant writing, a lot of the stuff that I think Anna did is she sort of like created that role and, and largely did it with like not a lot of direction from us. Um, that was our fault, not her fault, but I think a lot of the pieces made a lot of sense and like accomplished a ton, like a lot of the grant stuff. Um, but then it's like, question, do we have people in some roles currently where we could sort of like you know, maybe work, like, I don't know how much, I don't think Beverly has a ton of time, but like type of thing she could do is like more in the grant realm, I don't know.
Yeah.
I could be wrong in that, but thinking about if there's like pieces from that job that we could fit into someone's current job or like change their role a little bit.
Give something that Beverly's doing to somebody else.
Yeah.
Um, move things around a little bit.
I have, I have thoughts about that, but I think they probably need to be shared and on public.
Yeah.
And so we can do that, cause we're basically at the end of this meeting.
True. May I ask you a question? Um, Lisette said that she's very part-time. What does that mean? Is she a halftime employee too?
I thought she was thirty hours, isn't she?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so not super. So, right, our journey with the budget continues next week. Thank you to everyone who has put in so much time and energy and came in to talk to us. It's super helpful to walk through everything. Um, and next week we've got a lot to get through too.
Then, can we do a quick?
I think we do have a non-public on the agenda, yes, but really, I have. Question, um, why, I don't think I've ever been asked to sign this nine ninety. Why am I being assigned?
So. For our project, the sewer.
Okay.
Have a tax credit.
Okay.
Associated with it, so this is the time for that tax.
I see that, yeah.
Yeah, you sign that.
But I'm signing it, just curious. Well, okay, well, thank you for clarifying.
That's really cool.
Okay. All right, so I think we can, Stephen, you're making a motion to go and, and we've lost Jeff entirely, right? Oh, that's right.
So.
What, before you do that, um, so next week, sorry, is next week another budget work stuff?
It's a legit. We're also doing budget.
A little bit of potpourri, a little bit of everything.
Okay, which departments are we hearing from next week? Is it the rest of them?
The rest of them.
It is. Big ones, I mean, they're all big, but, you know, public safety is a huge.
Yeah, you want, we can push this to the following week, because we're gonna have a couple weeks after.
The non-public, no, we can do.
No, the, the, the EDC conversation, so where you were getting at?
They're getting at, yeah, it's like, I feel like I feel like pub, Department of Public Works is gonna be a big conversation.
They are.
Department's gonna be a big conversation, like, can I tell you, to be myself, but you know, like, police, fire, public works, I'm just like, oh, man, I feel like we're gonna have a bazillion questions.
Yeah.
Based off of all the other conversations we're having, can Dan go last of the three of them? Um, are there other departments?
However, you want.
I only said that because I, I guess if I had to choose, I'd go police, fire, public works. Quarter of number of questions I'm going to have.
So right now, it's cemeteries, police, fire, public works.
Mm-hmm.
Which is exactly what you want.
Exactly.
Separate cemeteries in front of it.
Amazing, I love that, thank you.
Oh, do you care if there's a typo? I found a typo in the, in the blue parts.
No, yes, I would happy to fix.
Do we wanna move the EDC conversation to the following weekend, then?
I think we should have a, but, no, I'm hoping to discuss.
Okay.
Yes, to both of those.
Okay.
Paper, it's E R Y.
Oh, look, okay. That means standing still.
Yeah.
Always catching the typos.
I'm gonna make a motion that we go into non-public under ninety-one, A three, Roman two, little C.
Not yet, we're not.
Okay.
Um, and then after that, we will not conduct any more, uh, public business. And we'll adjourn.
I second. All right, it's a roll call about Vicky.
Yes.
Steven.
Yes.
I mean, yes, awesome.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you to everyone who joined us.